We're live. Welcome to the April 2nd, 2025 Planning Board Public Hearing. This hearing will come to order. The Lyman Planning Board is holding a public hearing to review the application for 549 Clark Switz Road at-home daycare in existing converted garage. This is a public proceeding. You have the right to hear everything that is being said and to look at all the exhibits that are offered. Please notify the board chair if you are having difficulty seeing or hearing the presentation. This hearing is being recorded and broadcast on YouTube. All persons speaking will be asked to first state your name and address or affiliation. All questions or comments will be directed to and through the chair. It is required that you sign in the sheet to document your attendance at this hearing. Thank you in advance for your cooperation. Ms. Dennis, could you present to the public and YouTube at large what your proposed plan to do?
Uh, yep, I am Jenna Salvos. I'm at 549 Clark Switz Lot Road. I am trying to get approval for an in-home daycare in our converted garage basement. It's required to get town approval before I can get my state license. So, last time I spoke with you guys, you had concerns about the traffic flow of the daycare, and so that's what I'm here to talk to you today about.
Does the public have any questions, concerns, quirks, comments, pro, negative?
We're her neighbors. We're all for it.
Well, I think this is probably the shortest public hearing. We cleared the public hearing closure just then.
Okay. Awesome. Well, I brought these for you because I didn't want to leave and come back.
You're gonna need that in just a second. Now, I have to go through this portion.
Okay.
You can have a seat for a second.
All right.
We got some stuff to take here first. Okay, welcome to the April 2nd, 2025 meeting of the Lyman Planning Board. This meeting will come to order. This is a public proceeding, and unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session, you have the right to hear everything that is being said and to look at all the exhibits that are being offered. If the board votes to go into executive session, the reasons shall be stated. Please notify the board chair if you are having difficulty seeing or hearing. This meeting is being digitally recorded and broadcast on YouTube. In each instance, the burden is upon the applicant to demonstrate compliance with the provisions of the applicable ordinance or ordinances. After the board votes on the merits of each project, it will prepare a written opinion, which will be forwarded within seven days. The board works for a prepared agenda and will be considering this meeting in the following order. Jenna Salvos, 549 Clark Switz Road at-home daycare in existing converted garage. Number two, Patrick Gagnon, 54 Wilderness Way, map three, lot 33, wants at a vehicle inspection station, currently is using it for his landscaping company. This use will continue, and to review the minutes from the sidewalk. Daniel Maquah, I got, hopefully I'm getting that right. 135 Shore Road, map 17, lot 57, Tom LaChance to discuss the request of best practical locations for a deck within Shoreland and review Site Walk. Number four, Justin and Paige Tharke. Is that how it's pronounced?
You got it right.
Fantastic. 549 Walker Road, map three, lot 78-4, part of subdivision wants to amend the lot line, and it is an inquiry. What did I say?
549.
549, you dislike saying. Part of residential subdivision, tax map three, lot 87-3, and a portion of tax map three, lot 87-2, Old Kennamont Road, nine residential lots, final subdivision packet. Number six, Kyle Brooks Estates, map four, lot 22, preliminary subdivision application. Then we will schedule the next agenda for April 16th, 2025, review the minutes, any old business. At this time, I invite you to join with me in saluting the flag of our country. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Ms. Salvos, vote pick.
All right, so...
Yes, for her packet, so she has it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We have a roll call?
Yes, we need a roll call.
Tim Rivard, Poor Farm Road.
Bill Single, eight, single, eight. Kelly DeMers, 10 Partridge Way.
Kevin Vares, 64, Buggin' Up Pond Road.
And we do have a quorum here. And as always, if there are any members of the Lyman Municipality who wish to join us alternates to the planning board, please fill out an application, see if this is something you'd be interested in doing to help this wonderful community of ours. Okay, so, we had, the biggest concerns we had at the sidewalk, which went wonderful, was off-street parking access and turnaround time for when your clients drop off and pick up their children.
Yep.
And it looks like you plan on doing a little expanding to the driveway heading up. And you've got some additional parking there for proposed three vehicles in one spot and four vehicles in another spot. And our biggest concern with that is the topography is on a moderately steep uphill, kind of downhill side of a hill. So, for safety of the children, we want a place where the people to come in, get off the road, get in and out of vehicles very safely, so that when they're coming out, they're not going to compete with the traffic flow. Clark Switz Road's not a very busy road, but people can go a little over the speed limit in that area. So, it's concerned the children that we're looking for. And it looks like you're also planning on spot for four more cars up by the building itself. The board have any questions? There are no questions. And we have went through the original site plan checklist. Now, are we ready to move on to review the 16 standards? Do I have a motion to move on? So, move, so move, I have a motion to move up to the 16th, second?
Second.
Second, oh, right. So, already done the first part, which is preview, which has been all approved with waivers, every question granted. All right, we're starting off on 836.B. Will meet the definition of the use, the zoning district requirements, and any other requirements set forth in this ordinance. I will make a motion that the applicant meets, the proposed business is allowed, and it is in compliance with our zoning ordinance. We have a motion and a second. The applicant meets criteria number one. All in favor? All opposed? Approved. Number two, will not have a significant detrimental effect on the use and peaceful enjoyment of the abutting properties as a result of noise, vibration, fumes, odor, dust, light, glare, traffic, or other causes. Other causes could potentially children enjoying themselves in the great outdoors. And the neighbor has not seen any negative?
No.
Commentary at all?
Nope. It might help the traffic slow down.
We can hope, because, yeah, they can. Do I have a motion that they meet number two? Got motion, do we have a second? Kevin has a second. Any discussion? All in favor? I approve. Number three, will not have a significant adverse effect on adjacent or nearby property values. So, move. We got a motion, do we have a second? We got a second from Kevin Exa. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Approved. Number four, will not create a hazard to pedestrian or vehicular travel, traffic, or significant traffic congestion. That was addressed in our concerns noted at the sidewalk. There it looks like there's going to be nine possible spots away from that, up close to the residence. So, I'll make a motion, the applicant meets number four. We have a second from Bill. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It's a vote. Number five, will not result in fire danger. You're not going to be teaching your little toddlers learning skills and playing with them. Got to ask. You never know. So, we got a motion. I will second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Number six, will not result in flood hazards or flood damage, drainage problems, ground or surface water contamination, or soil erosion. It's on a hill. So, move. We got a motion. I see Tim second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Unanimous. Number seven, will not create a safety hazard because of inadequate access on the site or building for emergency vehicles. You're widening the road out to 20 feet, you got plenty of parking space, vehicles are not going to be stopping on the hill. There was decent sightline, so the coming in and out, emergency vehicles going in and out. I'll make a motion, the applicant meets number seven. We got Tim for a second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Unanimous. Number eight, has proposed exterior lighting which will not create hazards to motorists traveling on adjacent streets, public streets, is adequate for the safety of the occupants and the use of the site, and will not damage the value or diminish the usability of adjacent properties. You got to look pretty long through the woods to see your neighboring properties. We have a motion. I see Tim, do we have a second? We got a second from Kevin. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It's a vote. Number nine, makes adequate provisions for buffers and onsite landscaping which will provide adequate protection to neighboring properties from the detrimental effects of features of the development. The applicant shall provide a plan prepared by a registered landscape architect or qualified professional approved by the planning board. I think this is not applicable.
I agree.
You're not...
So, that's a second.
Any discussion? We have a motion and a second, that number nine is not applicable due to the nature of the proposed... No discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Waived. Or not applicable. Number 10, makes provisions for vehicle parking, loading, unloading, as well as vehicular and pedestrian circulation on the site and upon adjacent public streets, which would neither create hazard to safety or impose significant burdens on public facilities. That was our big concern. I believe, I'll make a motion, it's been properly addressed. Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Done. Number 11, makes adequate provisions for the disposal of wastewater and solid waste for the prevention of ground or surface water contamination. I don't think the activities of daycare would cause an overflow with the existing septic system in sight, and if you would, you'd just need to pump it out more often. So, therefore, I make a motion that number 11 is met. I see Tim nodding second. Any discussion? All in favor? Approved. Number 12, makes adequate provisions to control erosion and sedimentation. Do I have a motion that the applicant meets number 12? I've seen Tim nodding. Do we have a second? Kevin seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? Approved. Number 13, makes adequate provisions to handle stormwater runoff and other drainage on the site. It's a hill runs downstream, which feeds over and out through the valley. I... I'll say that it's not applicable, because we're not having any changes to the existing structure that would cause damage.
I agree.
Got a second? Any discussion that is not applicable? All in favor? Not applicable. Number 14, provides for a water supply which meets the standards of purpose, proposed usage, and meets the needs for fire protection purposes. It's daycare, we're not an industrial or commercial operating business, we're going to have 12 children. Don't think that they're going to run your well dry.
Nope.
Unless you have big swimming pools and you let them splash them out. So, move. Second, do we have any discussion? All right, we got a motion, second, no discussion. All in favor? All opposed? Approved. Number 15, makes adequate provisions for the transportation, storage, and disposal of hazardous substances, materials as defined by state and federal law. The storage of chemicals, explosives, or hazardous items as defined by the National Fire Protection Association Code 704, Class 3 or 4 materials are not permitted.
I think all hazardous materials go in the septic system, so I think they comply.
I was going to say, we don't know about those explosive diapers. So, do I have a motion? Do we have a second? We got a second from Kevin. Any discussion? All in favor? Approved. Number 16, will not have adverse impact on significant scenic vistas or on significant wildlife habitat, which could be avoided by reasonable modification of the plan. I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Done. Do I have a motion that the application be considered complete and approved? Do I have a motion that the applicant is complete?
I think so.
Okay, Tim, we have that motion of Tim, that is complete. Do I have a second? Kevin seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? It's a vote. You're approved.
Thank you.
I would make, I think you brought up something that is not going to be required, but to help slow down traffic, if you could put, I don't know, some breadboards out there? Or maybe, I don't know what the town would try to put, the size has caused the children to cross out children in the area? Just, I guess.
Are there any requirements that the state has to meet?
That would come from the state. Right, and this is just a safety concern from our, my part. The safety of children.
They also have those little plastic children shaking.
I think they have, and they have like one at the other end of the street, too. Someone has one, too.
Yeah, it's just a suggestion, it's not a requirement. A lot of kids, they taste like chicken.
She's got good chicken, too.
They like to visit.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes. You volunteering?
I'm doing the minutes, it should be sealed. One suggestion for condition would be, uh, recall state required.
She's going to do that before they'll issue a permit anyway. So, that's out of our hands. We could authorize anything, and something happens on her rim, they can not issue her permit at all. So, that's beyond our purview.
Good concern. Okay, next on the agenda. Patrick Gagnon, 54 Wilderness Way, map three, lot 33. Step up and approach.
Here's your maps that you drew on.
You guys want to see that?
Yes.
The lights and whatnot. Yes, that is a requirement.
We did keep asking them for them, they were in the office, they were tied.
Building, we have lights on, front and back like this, and on the sides, which you guys saw. Yep. This is your building, which needs your, this is a lot. This is a lot, yep. And then, um, I think, do you have the, before we looked down all the, do you want to roll the names of all lots? Did I drop off?
It was smaller.
Uh, no, it was the next size down from this. You know, dropped off? Had all the names and, uh...
Addresses.
Yeah, addresses, up to date.
Got it?
Okay.
Yep, yep, it's all right there. But, yeah. All right.
It's this one.
Yeah. Tim was at the sidewalk, what you looked at.
I saw the lady in the building.
Yeah. For public information, he wants, he's an existing building, structure, he owns a landscaping company, and to save him having to have his employees run his quick enough to Samford, he has a large, resistant garage, and he just wants to put an inspection station on there for, basically, his company use. But because he needs the permit for it, he's got to post it, and he's got to come through lots. So, we did a sidewalk on Saturday.
Yep.
Nice, cold snowy day, not much. It sits way back off the road, unless you know it's there, you're not going to see it. It's gated, it's got security systems involved in it. Wide open, plenty of parking. At the sidewalk, I didn't have any problem with it. Again, the only reason you're doing it basically is...
Just to do my own fleet.
For your fleet, to maintain your fleet.
Yep.
And longer, it's going to save you a boatload of money.
Exactly. Yep.
Anyone in the board have any questions?
No. I was fine with everything.
All right. And we deemed the preliminary...
Those three things, I think.
Yep, it was subject to, uh, the look, the size, location, direction, and illumination of all major outdoor lightings and apparatuses and signs. Signs are not limited. The lighting is existing already downward facing, and if I presume it's all LED lighting, it would have to be really bright to interfere with anybody.
Yeah.
And he did note it on the plans, as we asked. Uh, subject to the location type and size, low curb sidewalks, driveways, fences, retaining walls, parking spaces, et cetera, and layout thereof, whether dimensions. He did that for, not going to have really anything but his employees. And unfortunately, with the ground cover, we couldn't see any lines painted, but there's plenty of parking, ample parking for, you could probably bring in 20 people, and still not touch this site. Subject to addition. Uh, number 14 was another, the subject to the property lines, all properties flooding the proposed development, including properties across the street or across your lawn body, together with a tax map, lot numbers, property owners' names, mailing addresses, on file with the town office within 10 days of the filing of the application. And our assistant Julie says, she, they are in her possession, and she has displayed them. So, I will make a motion that the preliminary site plan is now considered complete. Tim seconds. Do we have any discussion regarding the completeness of the site plan? All in favor, it is complete? Um... Okay, now we got to move on. We don't need a public hearing on this one, do we?
That was my question.
Don't you, because you did...
Yes, we do need, we do need a, a cycle, oh. Yeah, one of those. Public hearing. So, when do we want to schedule a public hearing?
Hang on, I'll check.
I was asking when, not stating.
Hold on, hold on.
Howard Road. Off 111.
So, where your time is right there, Kelly?
Yep. Yeah, go down that, your first left right over there.
And then you turn on that left and go, and go.
Yes, it's pretty far back this way, it's hidden.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yep. 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 Yeah, Joe Robert split it off, and I bought the back lot. So, it's hidden out there. Yeah. Yep. Yeah, it's nice and quiet. Yep.
It's going to have to be the first Wednesday in May. That's the earliest we can do it.
All right.
May 7th.
So, we'll schedule you to come in on May 7th for a public hearing, and just like we did for Ms. Salvos, you know, you'll come up, present to the public, you know, questions, concerns, anything that they may have.
Yep.
You know, you may have a neighbor that says, you know, "I don't want all these trucks running up and down my road."
Yeah.
They can come out and say...
Yep.
After this...
5:30, Julie.
After the public hearing, just like Ms. Salvos, we'll come up, and we'll run through the remaining 16 standards. All right, so we will see you on, what did we say, May 7th?
7th, 5:30.
5:30.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we will see you then.
All right, sounds good. Have a good one. Thank you.
Take care. All right. Are we ready to have the conference call with Tom LaChance?
I'm trying.
All right.
Marking up.
All this wonderful technology in today's day and age, we are looking to have, we did a site walk for the property for Daniel Maquah, 135 Shore Road, map 17, lot 57, to discuss the best practical location to install a deck that they want to put on the property. The concerns involved is the...
Are you ready? All right, I'm going to put you on speaker. Get a feeling thing, so... All right, Mr. LaChance, you are here with the planning board.
Awesome.
Good evening, Mr. LaChance. Kelly DeMers, the board chair. How are we doing this afternoon?
Very well, yourself? Sorry, I'm not there.
Hey, things getting away, but we can do this.
Okay.
So, we did have a site walk, which was on Saturday, uh, at 10:00 AM. No, yeah. We had the site walk. We did have, uh, we did have a quorum present. As I was starting to explain to the residents present, the concerns, A, it's Shoreland zoning, very small, very tight lot, lot. The existing structures, not much room for maneuverability in there. You're looking to put a 10-foot deck on the backside to accommodate a person who has maneuverability issues, if we can say that without offending anybody.
Correct.
Uh, and the concern is getting it so that it comes as close to compliance with the 75-foot setback, uh, from Shoreland zoning. And I am looking for a survey. Oh, God, I need my glasses. I need a magnifier. Does the board have any comments about the sidewalk? It is close.
I wasn't there, but I know there was a pathway going down to the lake that was paved or concrete or something.
Some concrete steps that dubious at guess.
Okay, so, my understanding was they were discussing possibly taking that out in order to have enough leeway to put the deck on to be as compliant as possible.
Right.
That's correct.
And how did that look to you guys? Because I wasn't there.
It was a little snowy, and those steps would be coming up. What I saw that caught my attention and would probably most likely work in your favor is there is an existing homemade stone retaining wall on the property that is right where that proposed deck would be being installed.
That's correct. It goes pretty much right on top of it.
So, that is already, if I'm wrong, someone, please correct me. That part of the property has already been encroached upon, you're not, wouldn't be extending past it. You would just be going to the current onsite improvements.
That is correct.
Is that what you saw, Kevin?
Yes.
That's why I was, I...
All right, you need to clarify that for me, I'm lost.
Okay, onsite, you have...
You've got the stone wall, you're not going to go beyond the stone wall.
He's not going to be going beyond...
There's two stone walls.
There's this one.
There's another high one, there's another stone wall that's out about three and a half feet past that.
Exactly. And it was a little snow covered, and I... And it was a little snow covered and I looked at it, that's been there for a long time for soil erosion. So Yeah, you're not going to be going past it.
Correct. It goes right up to pretty much right on top of it, even pretty much right from the top of that.
Yeah. Did you see anything, Tim, that
Well, on one side of the property.
Yep.
It appeared to be a stream running.
Yes.
Now, I think that would fall into the shoreline zone as well, wouldn't it? If it's defined as a stream, I
Is it groundwater or is it an actual stream bed?
Well, I, it was running pretty good.
Yeah, but it's spring.
It was also what, 47 degrees that day and raining and snowing?
Right, right, but I don't know how that's defined.
I mean, right now, it's probably, I would guess, yeah, you're probably going to run for the next, you know, two or three weeks, like any type of will from a slope from behind.
Yeah.
Yeah, but once, once the snow is gone, then it's pretty much over.
That's my, my feeling on that is, once we get the spring runoff or except during other than severe storms, hurricanes or such, that
Different definitions of the stream would be intermittent or
Right.
perennial or some year round.
Yeah. So I, I looked at that, that was one of my concerns. It's been there for a long time. You're not going to be altering the topography around it.
Correct, now, I mean, you in that area, right, the area where you did that is
Right now, they're just, the rest of the board's looking at the photographs that you had presented as evidence.
There's this one, and then this one is down below.
Okay, okay.
That one's up here.
Yep.
Okay.
You know, I think everyone saw from the site walk that they, you know, the safety concerns with the unevenness, you know, some steps are two inches, some are ten and a half, some are nine and three quarters, you know.
Yeah.
It's kind of going to eliminate, the deck's going to eliminate that whole safety concern around that.
Yeah, and some of the steps lean forward and some of the steps lean back to the side. So, and you're planning on removing those existing downward steps and the landing. So you're removing 40, 51 feet and you're going to be, the deck will go over 75 feet. So there will be a slight net gain, but you will be maintaining the existing improvements, which is that retaining wall.
Correct.
And again, this is to be in compliance with ADA wheelchair access around table and everything else.
That is the main concern. As well as being just like, you know, both of the sets of the exact same.
That was one of the other things we noticed is, the immediate budding neighbor had a beautiful, large deck that was fairly new, that was sticking out, so much closer to the water, but it was over an existing improvement, which was a slab. So there is precedence on that. How does the board want to proceed? Tim's looking at shoreline zoning, I believe. You didn't notice what I was supposed to
Yeah, I am.
In this folder.
They were helpful.
What are you reading?
No, no, I took the
It's going to improve the property, my humble opinion.
If you consider that rock wall, existing structure, he's not going to go beyond that, so he can remodel. He just can't go any closer.
Yep. He could rebuild that retaining wall and that's he just, current existing grandfathered plane.
Might help. If you take front of a house that's sitting facing the water and the front of the house is exactly 75 feet from the water.
Yep.
And it has a 10 by 10 deck on the front. Now, the house is 24 feet wide, but it's a 10 by 10 deck. You can go sideways with the deck and expand it, and that's not considered encroaching closer to the water, because you're just going sideways.
That's right.
So you've got an existing rock wall there. You're not going beyond that, so you're, you're dealing with existing structure. So that's not considered an expansion. Does that make any sense?
Yeah. Yeah, it does. Kevin, did you take a photograph of the budding property's deck?
Not directly, but maybe
Because that was one of the things that caught my attention with, especially when I looked at they just
Proud of the faces, but I mean, we don't know the history of them either. We've got to assume that, like I say, that was an existing patio that was redone.
It looked like it was good weather instead of new concrete.
Yep.
So
What's next?
Oh, site division checklist. It covers the following. Actually, why did we not complete this before we did the site walk? Because there were some questions asked, or waivers requested. Which makes logical sense.
So what was not completed, the preliminary
Site plan checklist. Because I think it was originally a preliminary inquiry, now turned into a full application.
It was made for a loop. It's 838 comes before 836.
Yeah, right.
It's like, confusing.
What's that?
Well, we're talking, the first checklist is 838, the second one is 836. Just not know.
834, then 838.
Then 8
And then 836B. I don't write the ordinance, I just uphold them. So you want to
What's left to go over on that?
Everything. Because we don't have the site plan scaled not smaller than one inch to 40 feet. The list of all the butters, total square Rebecca's not here, she's in
All that stuff, all that stuff was done. And then it's on the, when I went over with you guys, the survey was done by Grant Lodge. Now, it was beforehand, Jake Lee Saban, and he sat on his graph, he has the, it's a scale of one to 40.
Yes, that's right, that's right.
And she, and she had a list of all the butters.
Julie's going through paperwork right now. This is what I'm trying to do. There's survey from middle branch. And here's another one, graphic scale. Existing footprint. Smaller version. There's a list of your butters. Do we want to run down the site plan checklist?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Does the site plan checklist, because this is a shoreline zone, is there a separate shoreline checklist?
I believe there is, we got a
Isn't it on page? 87?
Yes, the eight standards for shoreline.
It's a shorter list.
I like that.
Me too.
You have to need to go to separate specific written. You got that? It's the best. It adds to the talk, but I know you guys love hearing me talk. Alright, let's do the site plan checklist, then we'll go on to the shoreline permit acceptance. Shall we? 8.3.4, be established by the select board, voter selection has been received. So that's, we don't even need to vote on that, it is just, yeah, we do.
What are we doing?
834, site plan checklist. Because that would be noted on the application, which is here in this paperwork. So I'll make a motion, the applicant has paid the fee.
She never came to them.
What?
I don't think she ever came to pay.
Oh.
I'll have to check on that.
So that'd be a conditional approval.
I'll have to look through it.
Because usually we see that it's been paid, but this one's a little different.
This has been ongoing for a couple of months now.
Yeah.
Hinder by the weather.
Definitely.
Yeah, I think our original plan was for February 1st.
Yeah.
So we've been delayed a month due to weather and everything else.
Alright.
So conditional confirmation.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Yep.
Tim seconds, any discussion? All in favor, all opposed? Provide three sets of mailing labels for the butters within 500 feet in property, including mailing address and map lot.
They're in here somewhere.
Go ahead.
You said you saw them.
We just checked to see if that's been provided. Because that's one of the requirements.
Yeah, I know, it was on the list, and it was sent in from the staff, yep.
It's in here somewhere.
I need to what, I need to bring them in and do it, is that what I need to do?
Julie's checking for them. She's very thorough, but just very busy right now.
If they're not in here, I'll let you know. I was a conditional, that if I can't find them, I'll get them.
So
Yeah, she can't, she'll let me know and I'll be in tomorrow, probably in witness.
Well, that sounds good, so I'll make a motion that the 835C is conditionally accepted.
Second.
Tim, give him seconds. Any discussion, all in favor? Conditionally accepted. 838, number one, site plan drawn to a scale not smaller than one inch equals 40 feet. That has been received, do I have a motion that meets criteria for number one? Bill, do we have a second, I'm seeing Kevin, do we have any discussion? All in favor, approved. Number two, the name and address of applicant plus the name of the proposed development. We got the name of the applicant, it's not a development. And the name is on the application, so I'll make a motion, the applicant meets number two. Bill seconds, any discussion? All in favor, all opposed, approved. Number three, total floor coverage, total area, ground coverage, location of each proposed building, structure or addition, and that has been provided. I think that is exhibit, this is for number three and number one, so I'll make a motion, the applicant meets criteria for number three. Second, give him a second, any discussion? All in favor, all opposed, approved. Number four, a perimeter survey of the parcel made and certified by a registered land survey license in the state domain relating to the reference points, plan must be surveyed through a magnetic and orthographic scale corners of the parcel, date of the survey and total acreage, and that was provided, I think the survey date was I can't read that. Too small, my little eyes. But it's, we have them. So do I have a motion that they meet number four? Bill's one. Kevin seconds, any discussion? All in favor, all opposed, approved. Number five, all existing or proposed setback dimensions, that is on the survey which is presented here along with other exhibit where the proposed deck and its dimensions are located. So do you have a motion that meets criteria five? I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Bill seconds, any discussion? All in favor, opposed, done. Number six, the size, location, direction, intensity of illuminations of all major outdoor lighting apparatuses and signs. It's residential property, I don't think there's going to be any signs in any lighting would be existing to the building. I don't think that's applicable, and he's asked for a waiver on that. Second. Any discussion on granting a waiver? All in favor? Waiver granted, unanimous. Ah, water. Number seven, the type, size, location of all installation devices. I didn't see any and he's asking for a waiver. I'll move to grant the waiver. Kevin seconds, any discussion? All in favor of granting a waiver? Unanimous. Number nine, the type, location of all machinery likely to generate appreciable noise at the lot lines as well as established disco levels of property lines. He's requesting a waiver, I see no reason not to grant the waiver. Do I have a motion? We have, I'll stay, you made the motion and I'm seeing Tim second with a nodding of the head. Would have any discussion? All in favor of granting a waiver? Unanimous. Number eight, the type, location of all machinery likely to generate, no, we did that. That's why I didn't get myself another cough drop. Location type of all existing proposed catch base and storm drainage drainage facilities, wetlands, streams and water courses, as well as all utilities above and below grade. We have a lake, which is big water course, which is the reason for that. We also noted the location of that little seasonal stream that marks the boundaries. Anyone have any questions regarding that? I'll make a motion that the applicant meet criteria for number nine. So moved. We got so moved, I'll second that, any discussion? All in favor? True. I'm getting whiplash snapping back and forth here.
Why you get the big bucks?
I get paid for this? Now we missed the Christmas party. Number 10, all existing contours and proposed finished grade elevations or of the portion of the site which will be altered in the systems and drainage proposed to be constructed contour intervals shall be specified by the planning board. Existing structure, you know, the only thing that's going to be proposed is putting a deck from the residence over, but not further than the existing retaining wall. That's a good way to put it. So, not applicable, I think.
Well, meets terms of the requirement, so
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Do we have any discussion? All in favor? Number 11, the location type and size of all curved sidewalks, driveways, fences, retaining walls, parking spaces, et cetera, and the layout thereof, together with the mentions. It's residential property that's been in existence for probably at least 50 to 60 years of fabric.
I don't think any of that's changing, is it?
Nope.
So. He meets the criteria.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Number 12, all proposed landscape area size type of plant material upon the premise. He's not changing the landscaping at all, it's natural vegetation, so that's going to, I'll state that it's not applicable. So we got a second from Bill. Any discussion? All in favor? Approved. Number 13, all, all existing or proposed right of ways easements or other legal restrictions which may affect premises in question. Requesting a waiver, there's going to be no changes, any CCs and Rs would already be existing on the deed, so... I'll make a motion that we grant the waiver. Kevin's second, so enthusiastic. Any discussion? All in favors, all opposed? Number 14, the property lines of all properties abut in the proposed development, including properties across the street or across a water body, together with the tax map block numbers and property owners' names, mailing addresses are filed by the town office within 10 days of filing the applicant. Now, one thing I just noticed about that, if they're across the lake, I don't think they really need to go three quarters of a mile, you know, wherever.
It's more than 500 feet.
Yeah, well, it does say, it does say across water bodies, it doesn't give a distance. But there are all the shoreline abutters, and then all the butters on the map. So I will entertain a motion that the applicant meets the criteria for number 14.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Number 15, the appropriate box for the page of the plans for the signatures for the planning board. I don't think we have that. Unless he has, do we have another copy of that?
I don't think so.
That'd be conditional, because we still got to have site, uh, public hearing on it.
We have time.
So that will be a condition. Did you hear that? On the survey, we will need a spot for the appropriate box on each page of the plans for the signatures of the planning board. So you'll just, you'll need to draw, you know, six little lines and a date. Number 16, documented right title of interest of the proposed site, and we have that.
No, I think she has that. Julie, she doesn't have that in her paperwork? I know I did, six lines.
It could be in there. I'll look for it.
Okay.
There's so much paper in that folder right now.
Yeah, and again, this is just a preliminary, because we're still going to have to have the public hearing. And then maybe typically like we did the rest of today, after the public hearing, then we'll go through and do the remaining 16 standards on that. Is it 16? Doesn't matter. Yeah, there's 16 more after this. Uh, so, number 16, documentation of right title of what interest of proposed property, we do have that, I just saw that. Do we have a motion? Do we need to get some, what is that, Red Bull or something? It's been a long day, folks. So, we got so moved, and do we have a second? We got a second, any discussion? All in favor? Number 16, bye. I think we only got two more things to do tonight. Number 17, onsite soil investigation report by a main stake licensed soil evaluator, the report shall identify the type of soil, the location of test pits, proposal location, design of any subsurface disposal system, existing structure, nothing's changing, he has requested a waiver. His book was bringing a waiver. We got so moved, do we have a second? And I'm seeing Kevin with a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Approved. Number 18, any type of raw finished waste material to be stored inside or outside of the roof building, including to their physical properties and chemicals properties, if appropriate. Report waiver requested. I don't think they're going to be improperly storing any type of any, so moved. We got so moved, do we have a second? Kevin's second, any discussion? All in favor? Alright, approved. Number 19, traffic date, the planning board may require that the applicant include traffic engineering plan, should the project be considered one of substantial magnitude along with a town state highway where fast-moving traffic occurs, i.e. 1113505. Should a traffic study be requested by the planning board, the following data shall be included. Estimated peak traffic hour to be generated by the proposal, existing traffic counts and volumes on surrounding roads, traffic accident data covered in the last three years, capacity of the surrounding roads, municipal facilities, parking and any other improvements which may be necessary on such roads and facilitate to accommodate anticipated traffic generated. The need for traffic signals or signs or other directional markers to regulate anticipated traffic, a waiver has been requested. I move that we grant the waiver, because this is not applicable.
I was going to say, is that car traffic or boat traffic?
At times, there would be more boat traffic.
I suck at that.
So we have a motion and a second to grant the waiver, as it is not applicable. Any discussion? All in favor? Alright, waiver granted. Number 20, any other information or data the planning board determines is necessary to demonstrate compliance with town, state or federal regulations. Compliance would be with the shoreline zoning ordinance, which is the reason for this coming before the board. The proposed plan, I believe, will meet the best practical location for the debt giving circumstances with the occupant. So unless the board can think of something else, I don't think they'd want to study on that little seasonal wash.
So they're going to take out that pathway going down to the lake?
Yes, condition that the existing deteriorated concrete stairs be removed and the stairs to the facing shore right side be removed and replaced with applicable or appropriate stairs up in quote standard.
Correct.
That make sense to everyone?
Yep.
Good catch, Bill. So that would be the condition of the removal of the existing concrete stairs and the replacement of the damaged wooden stairs with new stairs.
Correct, yep.
Agreeable. Inappropriate ground cover to make sure it doesn't wash out what is removed.
So stairs and ground cover.
Re-vegetate.
Re-vegetate.
Yes, you know, don't pour another concrete pad and say, well, I took out the old concrete, I'm just going to put newer than a... That was because we're trying to do as much swapping as we can, you know, three story here.
Yep.
Okay, so now we have completed the basic site plan review. Now we've got to move on to the shoreline zoning procedure for administering, administering permits. Does this come before or after the public hearing? I think before, so anything that we have to address is... Within 35 days of receiving the written applicant, planning board or code enforcement officer, as indicated in section 14, shall notify the applicant in writing additional materials that is needed to make the applicant complete. The planning board or code enforcement officer, as appropriate, shall approve with conditions or deny all permanent applications written within 35 days of receiving completed applicant. Okay, so this is saying it's going to be a completed application before we get to the standards, it looks like. However, if the planning board has a waiting list of application, a decision on the applicant shall occur within 35 days after the first available date. The planning board's agenda following receipt of the completed application over the 35 days of the public hearing, if the proposed usable structure is found to be in conformance with the proposed purposes and provisions of the ordinance. The applicant shall have the burden to prove that the proposed land used activity is in conformity with the purpose and provisions of this ordinance after the submission of a complete applicant to the planning board. The board shall approve on the applicant or approve with conditions if makes a positive finding based on the information presented that the purpose, proposed use are. We'll go through this right now.
Will this, would this replace the 16 standards?
It did in the past.
It did in the past. It did on one we did just last summer, last spring.
The other shore road one.
Yeah. So this would follow the public hearing, we would go through these standards.
Yeah.
After the public hearing.
I think Julie is correct.
Because these could be more stringent, they can't replace.
Just think of the logical flow. We want to hear the input from the public if there's going to be any, with the public hearing. And then we decide if everything we have with what they presented, if it meets his criteria.
Because this is more restrictive. If it fails this, it automatically fails theirs. So we have to go through the 16 standards.
But we didn't the last time. We only went through these eight, in the shoreline. I'll find it.
Please, thank you. I don't want to delay this process any longer, because we also need to be thorough. So we will plan a public hearing.
Public, we'll do it the same date as Kevin?
Sounds good to me.
May 7th.
The 7th.
I don't need to add.
Going on vacation, Tom?
You got to be able to make it from May 7th?
May 7th?
Yes, and present your proposal and everything, all the good stuff. Alright, fantastic. I'll hand the phone back to Julie, because this looks like a Samsung and an M&amp;I phone person. I don't know how to show it. Hey, you know, we try to be as accommodating as possible. Oh, we've been nothing worse once. Have a great, and we'll see you on the 7th.
Okay.
Hi, Tom. You're welcome.
So, public hearing.
Yeah, it's, there's so much paper in there. I just need the labels. Alright. Okay. Yep, bye.
Alright, so there's that one. Looks like we are in for a busy summer. And it is 6.34. Can we have Justin and Paige Tharp, please? Justin, Paige.
Justin, Paige.
You know, I did presume you could have been, you know...
I could be Justin Page. Could be my middle name.
Hey, my first name's Kelly, I get it all.
He's just in time.
Just...
I get that a lot. Funny, I'm usually late, though. Alright. Yeah, I get Thorpe a lot, actually. I think you all have copies of, uh, of this that were already provided to you by my neighbor Kyle Morris. But basically, we're, my neighbor and I are looking to do a acre and a quarter swap of land to facilitate building another house. It'll save money with driveway costs and stuff, if we can move it closer to Walker Road. Yeah.
Alright, you should have, I believe he also provided a copy to me, so I only have one copy with me.
I can run copies real quick, like...
Julie and Sheila zip off some copies for us.
I'll give you just the copy too, because I kind of know exactly where it's.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
My disposable bottle stopped leaking after about eight months. We do three years recycle, these things are great.
Until they start leaking.
Well, again, you know, it's...
Yeah.
Then I'll just turn it in and get the nickel and buy another one.
There you go. Yeah, so the gist of it is, the land we want to swap, my land is part of a four-lot subdivision that was established back in like 2016 by Cripple Creek, it's on the paper. Um, and so we're not sure if we need to get approval to be able to amend that subdivision to do this land swap. That's the gist of it.
Are both properties within the subdivision?
Just mine.
Just yours.
The other one is not.
So do we, do we have anything on the subdivision at all?
I think he talked with code enforcement, and she, he or she wasn't even sure if we needed to do this, so we're here just in case.
And got to love that proactive versus reactive. The big thing I would think would be if there's any covenants, conservations and restrictions in your association.
There's not.
You know, because sometimes, you know, this, no land should be split, self-divided, transferred, whatever.
Yeah, the only reason it was split the way it was is because when they created it, they wanted to split four lots at the same time, and because of the rules about splitting one per year, it had to be done in a subdivision, that's...
If I remember correctly, I think it was Morris that did that.
Yep, Morris St. Clair, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
And those are all street-side lots.
Yep, they are.
Right along the road, and great hunting land out there.
Yes.
Yeah, so is, you're just doing a land swap, does that make sense?
Yeah, acre and a quarter of mine and an acre and a quarter of his, because it'll bring the building envelope closer to Walker Road and save us a bunch of money on putting in the driveway and telephone poles and all that stuff.
Yeah, because that would be my concern. The only thing I would think of is, does, did Morris put into place anything that says, you know, thou shalt not make any further changes to the law lines?
Well, we must have subdivision plans with approvals.
I think I have a, I think what she's copying, I think I have that in there, but...
But we don't dictate the extent of association rules and regulations. We just said they're going to happen.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yep. We're talking about you.
I know.
You know.
I'm listening.
Cripple Creek?
Yeah, so I've talked to MMA, I've talked to our town attorney, anytime. There is nothing that states that a subdivision can be amended in any way without your approval. So you have to decide how that approval is going to occur.
Because my concern was, does the association move by laws, or does a legal description state that it can't be perfected? I, do we have legal standing from MMA that says we have to review it?
I think this is the description of that original subdivision that she just made a copy of here. I don't know if that helps you.
Yep.
And yes, that is the answer that I got.
That is the answer from...
It has to be your approval.
Brad Moran in MMA, that any alteration from an existing subdivision must come before the planning board for approval.
Right. How that's accomplished, you have to tell me. What kind of an application process you're sending them through? Are they going to have to get certified plans? How far are they going to go? What documents do you need? That's what I'm unsure of, but...
If it's won, if it's being thrown into our lap, my recommendations, considerations would be that we require a complete survey. Essentially, basically go onto your butters 500 feet, like we do for any type of claim for us.
So obviously, there was a survey done originally.
Yes.
So probably best thing is that whoever did that, talk to them.
So you're gonna get a copy of the propos, so Brad Lodge, uh, went back there and did, um, an updated little sketch here of what the proposal is that we want to do. Um, and he actually, I believe, did some of the original work, but it could have been somebody else that did the original survey.
I'm gonna read it.
No, it's not your fault. We, all I remember this even better now. Reason we had to put that little dog leg in there was for the road and everything to have enough road frontage.
With the original layout, yeah.
Yeah, so we need to maintain that. Because.
Oh, and that might.
In order to create that back lot, you had to have the road and the frontage and everything else. The proposed cutting on that front one is doing away with the road frontage, it looks like it's doing away with the hammerhead and everything else. If I am interpreting this correctly.
So in other words, my lot would no longer have enough road frontage, is what you're saying?
Correct. That is why Morris made that little jog up in there and to give a sufficient, uh, space for, because there was some wetland in there, to make a buildable lot. We are talking about this being this, correct?
No. This is, this is me right here, uh, map four, so this right here is me.
Yep.
And this is me right here, this is this square.
Yep.
But this part is behind it over here.
Oh, do we have a full?
Let me see, I have a paper.
Okay, so we have, there, we are looking at this and this, okay, so you're, these lot seventy-eight dash four, which is the one to the far right, and he is coming up to the backside of lot seventy-three and running perpendicular or parallel with, my God, I need better glasses, I need glasses. It's a lot next to it.
I do actually think there's a, uh, I think there's a typo on this here, because this one's labeled seventy-eight-three, but it's actually in reference to seventy-eight-four, so I think that was just typo, but just to clarify that.
Yeah. So you're gonna do a hundred-foot right-of-way, and you're still gonna maintain three hundred and twenty-six, twenty-seven feet of road frontage, correct?
Yeah.
And then you're two fifty. What are you guys' opinions, thoughts? I see the logic behind it.
We'll see how it fits, that's what I'm.
Okay. This, this lot is here. We don't have this, if we had a full tax map, we'd see this lot behind here. How are they gaining access to their lot as it is?
The lot that's back there?
Yeah.
They own like sixty-something acres, so their house is way off this way, and that's just that land back there, they can't, they're not using, that's why we're trying to basically gain access to it this way, so that we can put a house back there.
So they're gonna be, the owners are gonna be selling that parcel?
Yeah, the idea is that my wife and I are actually gonna buy that back lot.
Yeah.
And sell our current house, um, once this is all, or buy that back, the house that we put back there and sell our current one.
Yes.
And we're really the only ones that have bought it that can give them a right-of-way and all of that to be able to do it, so.
They changed the application, so instead of just swiping up and seeing the map, I gotta do something, it's boring.
You want a big map?
Please.
We have a big map.
Cheeseburger fries?
What's the map number?
All right, I gotta go here to see how it fits, so. Here it is.
Hello, right there.
Yeah.
It is map three, lot seventy-eight-four. Sacred. I remember walking that when we did that. Because there is a wetland behind there, we walked out to the wetland and kind of whoop-de-doo's and doozy-whoo's goes around a little corner.
Yeah, it's very, uh, it's very wet further back over there.
Yeah.
That's why our house sits on like the front corner of that lot, because it was.
Yeah, there was gonna be that long road in access to seventy-eight-one, because there was a stream that went through it and had to be sitting on top of that little old rise.
That is a big map.
I don't mess around.
This is about that much.
They're not exactly huge, but you can see them better than that little piece of paper.
Right here. One, two, three. Get this one, this one, you split enough part of this one to gain access to this one, and just kind of kick it over. Actually, we can spin that around a bit easier for us. Reorient this house?
There's so many in it.
Walker? See, now I lost it. Right here. Here is this, uh. Rowing with the, turn around, row with charm. This lot is this lot, which is back here, not shown on this. He wants to take a portion of this one right here and give it to this one, swapping a girl and over.
How much of that is a subdivision?
The subdivision is this lot, this lot, this lot, and this lot. This is the one that's gonna be swapped. Yes.
Yeah.
So you're planning on buying this one?
A piece of this, right? And would be swapped with this one, so that we can, and then there's gonna be a right-of-way and a driveway on my edge over here to get to it. And then there'd be a house put in back here on a piece of that.
So you're altering a piece of a subdivision.
That's the, right.
That was already approved in a subdivision.
Right.
So let me ask a question. What are you gaining from the swap?
It's allowing us to buy the house closer to Walker Road, so we don't have to put so much driveway and telephone poles.
All right, now it makes sense.
I can already grant, I can already grant them a, uh.
Yeah.
Right-of-way to just go back, use my part to go back there, but it's gonna cost us way more.
So you want to put the house up in here, not back here, is what you're telling me?
So, uh, so this would be the right-of-way into it, this would be, uh, the, I, I had one of these with a building envelope.
That is, that's.
Yeah, right here.
This is the building envelope.
The building envelope is right here.
You can't put the house here, right?
Right.
So if there's no need for the swap, if you just grant yourself the right-of-way up, because this is only where you can build, and this one here has to mean, you know, where you've got this residence, because it's gotta fit within the building envelopes, in setbacks.
Right.
You know, because.
That circle won't fit there.
Yeah, because this one here, you have a building envelope because of the water, this, these little dotted lines are your building envelopes.
Let me, uh, I just want to see if Kyle's available, because, um, he has all of this figured out more than I do.
Well, it would be taken into this.
They gave us, uh, right-of-way.
They're taking this, this from this, this is one of this, this is over that. Proposed one point two five, proposed one point two.
You have to be able to, because how would you give an easement to something that may power for electricity if you could? Because really, a right-of-way and an easement's basically the same thing.
Exerting kind of de-granting a right-of-way here. So keep that, keep the right-of-way, just give the right-of-way access.
Yeah, I think, I'm hoping he, they went on vacation, so they asked me to do this, but he's the one who's been dealing with Brad and all the survey stuff, so I'm hoping he can take a phone call, but I want to say, the way it was explained to me is that, you know, yeah, this is the swap piece.
Yes, this is, these two pieces being swapped.
Yeah, I, uh.
If that was the case, you just amend the subdivision plan, show the right-of-way through that lot.
Well, then with the amended, then we're going to a, from a four to a five lot.
Just that, just that, that, that lot can be split off until, unless that lot has been split off in five years.
Things with five has been almost ten.
Yeah, we've been living there for seven or eight now, so.
Smarter people than me may think I'm wrong, but I think all you need is just this right-of-way straight up through.
Yeah, because you can't put the house down there, you don't have a big enough spot.
Yeah. So you're spending money rewriting surveys for a revision of the, uh, excuse me, of subdivision rules.
They gotta be assuming they're gonna put the house here. It's what, it's gotta be what they're thinking.
Of course, I'm not gonna give a check very.
I could be wrong.
Yeah, I, I, uh, I thought I had all of it understood, but I think.
I think we need more information, verification.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right.
What exactly is the intent is?
Yeah. The intent is to gain access to the back property, do expedite, and they're gonna have to put a right-of-way in anyway.
Right.
They won't be able to put the house here because of the setback, and here's your proposed, you know.
Yeah, so I'm gonna. I'll find out about that then, because I'm wondering if that was the idea, but, you know, if that's not gonna work, there's no point in doing.
Yeah, and especially where, you know, I don't know how wet it is back here.
Yep.
Because you've got the creek coming down here, where's the wetlands and everything else?
Yeah, it's pretty dry in here, but.
That's why this is, you know, we got, and when we look at here, that's why this one here, all these, these are your setbacks. Then we get into wetland, which there's Cripple Creek, and then this is what the lot. So.
Okay.
I think you need some more information on this.
Yep.
Uh, the survey delineating what the potential building envelopes, uh, provide us a copy of the subdivision application or something? Subdivision?
Okay.
To whom you can share it?
I don't have it here.
I'm sure it's in the office.
Yeah.
You have the original subdivision paperwork?
That's what you're talking about? Do you have your original definition of?
Well, this was a notice.
I have a still on application, to go back to it, instead of trying to figure it out now, which is might be easier. But actually, we know what plans you, do you want a new survey?
Did you hear what we, I was discussing?
Yeah.
Uh, my concern is, A, they're looking to do a land swap, which doesn't bring everything down to the road, so they're doing a proposed right-of-way.
So maybe we should have them come in on application.
Yeah.
And, and give you all of that, so you can digest it in, like, like regular process.
Yeah, that's plain reference.
I don't think they need to do a survey, I think they just need to take the one that was there and have it verified as well, you know?
I just need to know from you, when they come in to do their application, what documents you want me to have for that?
Yeah, because if they're looking, if they still want to do the land swap, it's in their best benefit to have full survey done with the setbacks, you know, delineate one, because there, there is wetland through there.
Yeah.
So, you know.
So what are you gonna require to do an approval of the change, uh, of subdivision?
Proof that the proposed area will be able to be built on, if it's all wetland and the.
Hey, so I was.
Doesn't need the setbacks?
At the, uh, planning board meeting right now.
Plan that can't be built on.
And they're saying, so if, if I'm understanding the plan right that we have, that piece we're swapping is the, is where you wanted to put the actual house, right? That's, that's where the building envelope would be?
Make it as painless as possible, if it could possibly be done.
So they're saying it's not a big enough area to put a house, like it's not a large enough building envelope to put a house.
Because you saw what I saw, and like, at first it looks great.
Uh, can I put you on speaker to kind of explain it, because I didn't quite understand? All right, cool. I'm gonna put him on speaker, this is, uh, Kyle, who was doing all the, uh, work with the surveys and stuff. There you go, you're on speaker.
Good evening.
How's everybody doing?
Doing wonderful, yourself?
Doing all right, thanks. So the, the building envelope meets all the setback requirements, and there's a three-hundred-foot circle in the rear of the lot, which meets the back lot requirement according to the town.
Right, our question concern is, um, you're gonna be putting in a proposal right-of-way for the first two-hundred-and-twenty feet.
Yeah.
But then you are swapping out the land, which is gonna be roughly two-hundred by two-hundred-and-eighty-three with the, you know, the hundred-and-fifty-eight, which is unnecessary, as you have the building envelope on the top portion. So instead of doing the land swap, just grant a right-of-way to it.
That's what we're saying, that this would be the building envelope here.
Right, so the, the reason that we're doing the land swap is because if we grant the right-of-way to that lot, we have one particular house that comes into that back corner, so you can have a house right there, so you literally have to come another three-hundred feet in behind the home of the Collins, and put a house in there, it's possible to do, but with what the Collins building right now, we put in a seven-hundred-foot right-of-way and try to build a house. The making of a wall, I mean, it meets all the setback requirements. Three-hundred-foot circle, the back lot, all the five-acre envelope.
Can the public keep it quiet, please? Thank you. Sorry about that, we're getting distracted. Yeah, it would be nice to see the survey with the topo and the, the wetland delineation and the proposed building envelope, which is what we're not seeing.
The proposed building envelope on the one and a quarter acres, you're talking?
Where, on what portion of this lot, which is lot seventy-eight?
Yeah.
Where is?
Seventy-eight dash four.
Well, we're losing a portion of seventy-eight dash four to go to seventy-eight, and we're taking apart a portion of seventy-eight to give to forty, seventy-eight dash four.
No, we're, 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 so I'm lot eighty, I have sixty-five or plus or minus acres on lot eighty, the Fars own seventy-eight dash four, so I, I basically own the five-acre lot on lot eighty, we're swapping an acre and a quarter with seventy-eight dash four, eighty, just to make a building envelope closer to the Walker Road, so we don't have to build a seven-hundred-foot long driveway to get to another building envelope in the back, that's all we're trying to accomplish.
So you don't, okay, I'm seeing. Eight, lot eighty is to the east or north of seventy-eight-four. There's a large lot, which also goes on pig farm, which is eighty dash two. Yeah.
Yeah, it, it could, maybe that's what they've delineated as, I, I subdivided one other lot, uh, maybe six years ago off of that, so maybe it is eighty dash two now in the town's records. Originally, it was map three, lot eighty is what my, my lot was, so I, I still own sixty-five acres and subdivided off, you know, a five-acre parcel like six-odd years ago, right on the Walker Road, so I'm just trying to take that from a five acres that I own off that Walker roadside of the road. That Walker roadside of the road and subdivided back lot off it, but needed a right of way through the Fars property to access it. Whereas they were interested in in the home, we're trying to do a land swap, so I don't have to build a 700 foot driveway. And inconvenience them with that additional expense on top of how expensive it already is to build a home, especially with the new energy codes that are starting next week.
Oh, yeah.
So it's it's just homes. Homes are unaffordable as it is, so to try to make this affordable as possible, we're trying to get that house closer to the lots road. We don't have to put six hundred plus driveway and power, you know what I mean?
We don't know because here is this proposed lot. I get it. I I see it here. I don't see it here. I don't see it here. Does that make sense? Yes, Rebecca, please come on down and enlighten us with wisdom.
No, it's it's more of so you're deciding that you you definitely need to make a decision on this as a board.
Yes, I.
Then let's let's have them come and fill out an application and get all this information and then we'll get them on the agenda. You can make a decision because we can't make a decision tonight.
No, we can't. There's just too much involved in this.
Yeah.
That I think a full.
Meeting.
Full site plan review and everything coming along with all those wonderful things that I've been spouting up all morning, all day. Those all gonna be checked off.
All right.
So you're gonna need the survey. You're gonna need the neighbors. You're going to need. The proposed location of the right of way driveway, anything like that, everything.
All right.
I wish I could say rubber stamp, here you go. I can't.
All right. Did you get that, Kyle?
Uh, not exactly. I'm sorry. I'm on speaker.
Yeah, that's so we're gonna need surveys. We're gonna need approval from the neighbors, you said, right?
Yep.
Which is me in the columns, yeah.
Let's see.
I'll I'll get a list together and send to you what we're gonna do.
So as the survey is not so regardless of any of this, is is it simply a planning board's decision to amend the subdivision? Or is there a clear zone ordinance that I can read or review that dictates when or when you cannot amend a subdivision? Because we had done all the research with the registry of deeds, the subdivision itself, I mean, we even, you know, spoke with the code officer. She could not specifically say whether or not we could or couldn't amend it. It's just kind of one of those gray areas. So my understanding was we're reading all of the setbacks, all of the building envelope requirements. I mean, sure, submitting a building permit. I mean, I'm meeting all of your guys' requirements.
Except for what has been presented to us does not meet the requirements.
And for what reasoning?
We have here a sketch show, proposed conveyance of proposed lot prepared by Kyle Moore, Walker Road lineman. Let's see, we do not have the topography. We do not have the full building envelopes presented on everything. We don't have wetland delineation because we do show Carlisle Brook cutting right through there. And we know that the building cannot be built within so so far as the wetland delineation. That's why the some the the application. Let's see if I have spare copy here.
May I pose another alternative? So I was simply to see the right of way from the Fars to my back lot. You guys would be fine. You're doing a building envelope there as long as it fits that back. We weren't swapping any property. Is that?
That was my my first thought when it came to me is like, why are you swapping land?
Uh, if it. Because it costs so much money to build an 800 foot driveway and put power into it. And then, you know, they're making building more expensive on April 7 by adding energy code and everything. I mean, you know, short of asking these guys to spend $700,000 to build a modest home, I mean, we're trying to push, you know, affordable housing. But at every turn, we're being met with obstacles that may be even more unaffordable. So people are trying to be creative in ways to to offer an affordable house to a local neighbor without asking $700,000 for the property, you know what I mean?
But the the residents will not fit in the building envelope on the roughly 283 by 200.
It absolutely will, and that's why I haven't had it surveyed at an acre and a quarter, because I can fit a 60 foot by 26 or 28 foot deep property on there. It still has more than enough room on all of my setbacks.
And that would. There would be no wetland encroachment at all in any way, shape or form.
Zero zero wetland encro- encroachment, which is why we the property call us to get out of the flood zone envelope. And there's a small metlin on the very edge of Walker Road, and we are well beyond at least 125 foot setback from that.
Just do the photo op.
That's mine.
I mean, it was it was done with a lot of forethought. I mean, we aren't just doing this to like cheat out of it. It just it made sense to swap this land. Otherwise, I wouldn't even be asking you guys for permission. I would have just gone the right of way, needed it, moved out my way. But I mean, honestly, it just it made more sense to put the house where we pledged the votes and that's all.
We have been requested to look at this because it is a little.
It's an inquiry.
Right.
Worth saying do the formal application.
That's my opinion. Bill, is that your opinion?
Yeah.
Kevin? Tim?
Yeah.
It is the decision of the board that a full application be presented to the board.
Okay, and that that's totally fine. I'm happy to give you guys what you need as long as you just adjust the the list or the paperwork.
Yep, that's that's.
I'll I'll approve without a benefit of doubt that it meets your guys' requirements. It's just it's such a big area. I mean, we simply didn't answer specifically from the code office whether I mean you did or didn't need to even approve this. So that's kind of why we're here.
Yeah, and reviewing it, that was the decision that the board has come up with. That way there, everything is straight above. Boy, you guys don't don't run into a situation a couple of years down the road. And all of a sudden, someone finds themselves in court for whatever reason. That an indigenous tree frog happened to live within 75 feet or whatever. So.
All right.
All right. Thank you very much for your consideration.
So when I get back, I can take care of that for you guys. Will that have to be at another planning board meeting or something that get presented to the code officer?
It will be another meeting.
It'll be another meeting.
Yeah, okay. Very well.
All right, I've got the application, Kyle, so we'll go over it.
Okay, Des, appreciate it.
Yep, talk to it. All righty, thank you.
Very much. Thank you very much.
All right, now we have. Upper residential subdivision.
All right, Joe Martin with Sightlines. So since we last met with you. We I wasn't here, but as I understood, the issue with the right of way. Transfer on Old Kement Road was resolved. The town attorney was comfortable with it. The only change after that is one of the road names was appro- proposed as Haven Road, and there was another road. What was the other road called?
Haven Way.
Haven Way. So the town asked us to change the name, so it's now Sanctuary Way. So that will be updated on the on the final subdivision plan, assuming this is approved tonight. Um, so with that, willing to go through the checklist and answer any questions or.
I was gonna say.
Comments you have.
The my big thing in was from the legal standpoint was the right of way issue. Typically, they'll delineate from this portion to this portion and they'll state it along the survey. We have two attorneys stating that that is the current statement is fine and sufficient, so I'm good. I have no more questions regarding this.
The only other update I'll give to is the the Strongwater Permit with the DEP is in process. It's they're they're behind on everything right now. So I would request that if this is approved, it would just be conditioned on that.
Yeah, we'd already discussed that, and that was one of the conditional things because bureaucracy, you know, you deal with it all the time. I think so.
That was a couple of years ago.
Two or three.
Yeah.
Now you got that song stuck in my head.
Sorry. I'm sorry.
All right, so we have had. The approved the original site plan review. Had not one, but two sidewalks. A boatload of questions, answers, changes. We voted that the application was complete. We want to move on to the final plan.
Yep.
All in agreement? I got like. A lot of. Section seven, final plan, vote to approve preliminary plan. Starting with 7.1 required requires DEP permit. That has been addressed, taken up, and we're waiting for all the information on that. Someone else, Susan Parkin, make a motion, please. Seven point 1.1.
Okay. I'm here.
You're here? I see Tim shaking his head that he makes motion. Do you have to meet the requirement of 711 requires DEP approval? Because there is wetland and everything in involved with that, that will be a conditionally accepted. Do we have a second? Kevin seconds, any discussion? All in favor? Waiver, uh, conditioned. Number two. Waste system in wastewater system approved approval, and we have the designs, specs and everything. I'll make a motion that they meet number two. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Tim seconds, any discussion? All in favor? Provided and approved. Subsurface wastewater disposal system approval. Again, very thorough packet, everything requested provided. Do I have a motion?
Yeah.
Tim, do we have a second? Kevin, any discussion? All in favor? Approved. Number 7.2 Quality of Performance Guarantee. This was the one. That we've been was the for the bond versus the check, which. We don't like the check. That's shoreline.
I forgot to look into it. I'm sorry. We've been swamped.
I know, and I I put down my subdivision book and I'm. Nope, lost without my subdivision book. Shoreland, town, street design, shoreline. Do we know, because we're not gonna require them to. Deposit a check for X amount of dollars.
I believe it was the last email. Was that the town treasurer? Would. Accept a.
There was three things, either bond, cash check, or a line of credit or surety. You guys will be putting up a bond, I presume?
So I apologize, I didn't read this section four, but the the performance guarantee, is that for anything to do with the public improvements? Or is that just construction of the road itself?
My brain is fried at this point.
All required improvements, the total cost of all required improvements will be based on a construction cost. Schedule of values provided by the developer will review and approval by the planning board.
Yes, so we provide something that would be in to the satisfaction of the town for performance guarantee.
And as you very well know, that's to prevent them from starving the infrastructure, getting halfway through, taking the money and running and leaving the landowners with a gravel road, no underground, you know.
Yep.
It says. For the purposes of this section, required improvements shall mean all site preparation, including, but not Don's favorite words. But not limited to any public and private roads, all drainage structures and ditches, all erosion control measures, all common or public utilities and all required landscaping.
So that will be provided.
So would that be a condition of approval as well?
Because we don't know the total value, so until everything. And of course, Rebecca won't issue permits until it's met.
Yep.
So. Move that the performance guarantee be conditional. Second. That not. Second, any? Any discussion? Approved for conditional acceptance. Seven, three inspection requirement improvements informal and not submission in a not submission requirement. What the heck is that? There's a performance guarantee. This is seven, three. Submission required improvements shall be inspected as follows. At least five days prior to the commencement of the construction, required improvements of the subdivision applicant shall pay an inspection. I do not remember going through all this.
This does not sound right.
No, not. Because we do have seven, four, three. If we're in section seven.
Yeah, but.
Section three, three, one.
Is that that preliminary?
We've approved the preliminary.
But is this preliminary? This article, three, section.
Lost by version traffic sewage disposal municipal soil. Solid base municipal government services. This would have been so much easier with three, three unit subdivisions.
Just saying.
Joking, kidding. Yeah, this whole section seven, I do not remember. Ever going through that section eight. And then we get to section nine. I do not remember the application, this being this. Because cluster development doesn't even come into play in that. We're not dealing with creation maintenance of open space requirements. Development of fields with active recreation.
Yeah, there's a pretty large chunk of this that was not applicable.
Right.
Yeah.
Wait a minute. I'm seeing things those are are you relating to the whited out areas that's not applicable, requesting not applicable? Because most of this is not applicable. Lot numbers and letters of lots acceptable to the tax assessor because the tax assessor does lots of numbers, not lots. See how many things are whited out? But eight, one, five, public access roads include must be built by the applicant prior to the insurance of the company, occupancy permit. Who is meeting minimum specifications. That's not linked out. I don't remember this with Brock subdivision. I think she's calling on Rebecca. Not that I want to delay you or delay the other for the night, but. If I don't need, if we don't need to go through. six, eight pages
Yep.
Of asking questions and votes and that aren't applicable. That will save us time. Which will be beneficial to all involved. What do you have, Parkin?
Some of the stuff is applicable though.
Right, and you're seeing like all this, this is checked, this has all been whited out, appears to have been whited out. Whited out, whited out, whited out, whited out. Instead of saying waiver or not applicable.
Who whited it out?
I don't know.
Which application is that? Is that the amended subdivision?
This was the one I've been working on with all my notes. Let's see if this one
The super thick one has a whole checklist.
This is 25th.
Remember, we're looking at two separate application packages.
See, this is the same, this is the most recent one that came tonight. Whited out. Why is it still, still valid?
That's for the amended subdivision plan, not the full subdivision.
If you look at the big packet.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like eight to 10 pages into it.
There it is.
Yes.
But, these are just showing that they're there, then we got the not applicables. We've still got to go through as I suspect. We still got to go through the boatload of them. But luckily, there's a bunch of not applicables.
I wonder if you could just kind of blanket statement those ones that are not applicable?
I would love to. I got this, because I was reading off this one, which is where I've been keeping my notes.
That's what I just got.
Right, because Kevin pointed out that it's in the one from March 26th. And I lost a page that was just from this. All right. Thank you, man. It has been suggested that any section that has been deemed to be non-applicable, we just blanket cover, however hypothetically speak. Uh, 8.5.1 sidewalks. If required sidewalk shall be installed at the expense of the subdivision. That's not applicable, that's part of our standards, and we're requiring some sidewalks. Because of the size of the subdivision? Yep.
Is a sidewalk going to be dirt, because the road is dirt?
There were no sidewalks proposed as part of this?
Yes.
I'm thinking of a different subdivision. Oh my gosh. Be quiet. Right down out there. Man working. Got to bust his chops.
Almost comes in.
I think we got a vote on if it's not applicable or not. So sadly, we must go through every single one. Let's say you all.
Just do it and get it over with.
Exactly, all right.
Move along, move along, chop, chop, boys.
Be ready in a second. Take your time. We're at overtime now. Thanks, I almost have one to say for about script to work on. We've been 11 plus years. All right, so we will continue, we've done, we have 7. 7.1.1, final plan, vote to approve preliminary plan. Which is page one of eight. We went through, one through, through two, we're at 7.3. Agreed? Okay, and there's an X on this one here, which says it's been presented, so. Inspection required improvement. Informational and not a subdivision requirement.
Not a submission requirement.
Submission requirement. Someone jump up and say move to a, or deny, or I'll entertain a motion if the applicant meets the criteria for 7.3. Yes, we got a motion, do we have a second? Kevin's holding off.
For the inspection, that's going to be another chunk that goes into the escrow.
Yep, yeah, we'll conform with whatever the inspection requirements are.
I'll second that.
Got a motion, a second, any more discussion? All in favor? 7.4, final plan submission, yes. I'll make a motion that the applicant meets 7.4, final plan submission. Do you have a second? Tim seconds, do we have any discussion? There are no discussion, all in favor, all approved. 7.4.1, all information required for preliminary plan. I'll make a motion the applicant meets requirement for the preliminary plan, do I have a second?
Yep.
We got a second from Tim, do we have any discussion? There are no discussion, all in favor? Approved. 7.4.2, existing in all final lines, streets, utilities, and lot lines, and that is provided on the final plan, so I'll make a motion the applicant meets 7.4.2.
Second.
Tim seconds, any discussion? All in favor? Approved. 7.4.3, road profiles, cross sections, radiuses, and curves, that is all on plan provided. Make a motion the applicant meets 7.4.3.
Yep.
Tim seconds, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed, yes, approved. 7.4, why do we have 7, two, 7.4.3s? Just in case, just in case, to see if I'm reading it correctly, I think it should be 7.4.4. Location of all permanent monuments existing or proposed. Those are on the full surveys provided, I'll make a motion the applicant meets 7.4.3.
Yep. Second.
Tim seconds, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed, unanimous. 7.4.5, lot number or letters of lots acceptable to the tax assessor. Do you know if that's all said duly with the tax assessor?
Do you know? I do not know.
All lot numbers and letters. Lot numbers and letters with the assessor. It's going to be mapping lot. Yeah, what they're doing.
I mean, we've numbered the lots on the subdivision plan, so I assume the assessor would take those and then
Yeah, and then break it down.
Yeah, yeah.
7.3, D F 2 B A, and then the street addresses are assigned by the USPS.
No.
No, that, so that's going to have to go to Lori, right?
The, um, street numbers are addressed by the town's 911 addressing officer.
I sit corrected. Do you have those?
No, because we don't know with the, anyhow.
Anyway. But they will be done acceptable to the town tax assessor. So I'll make a motion. Yeah, was that?
Yes, they will.
Okay, I make a motion that they meet 7.4.5, do you have a second?
Yep.
Tim seconds, any discussion? All in favor?
Yep.
Approved. 7.4.6, name, registration number, and seal of persons who prepared the plan. Think we've seen it several times.
Yep.
Pretty soon we're going to be having a bunch. Second, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Approved. Written offers of all open space shown on plan and documentation of title of how maintained. There's not going to be any open spaces, so therefore it's irrelevant, not applicable? Yeah. So moved, not applicable, do I have a second? Tim, Kevin seconds, any discussion? That is not applicable, all in favor? Not applicable. Page two. 7.5.2, written evidence that municipal officers are satisfied with illegal sufficiency of the documents. That's what we're writing right now, after the preliminary subdivision plan has been approved, the sidewalks much disgusting. Is there any municipal officer that we are aware of that this is not satisfied with legal sufficiency of the documents? My last one was the right titled deed of the right of way, I'm satisfied. So, do I have a motion? Do we have a second?
Yep.
Tim? All in favor? Opposed? Good. Section 8, standards. So moved. I would love, I would love to. Subdivision must be above floodplain level per current FEMA regulations.
Yes, the floodplains are shut on there, all the building envelopes are outside.
Everything's delineated, elevations, floodplains, wetlands, everything else, building envelopes. I move that the applicant meets 8.1.1. We have a second from Kevin, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Done. 8.1.2, plan must show each lot from a building envelope that is adequate and can have an adequate sewage supply, sewage system. All that's out there, you've got, then your test pits.
Yep.
And everything else has been drawn, redrawn, and drawn again. Was that a make a motion, Kevin?
Yep.
Tim makes a motion, do we have a second? Kevin makes a second, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Done. 8.1.3, when available, public water and sewer is to be available. Not applicable, not applicable, I second that, any discussion? All in favor, not applicable. Not applicable. You missed that on the check box.
I know.
8.1.4, storm sewers either closed or open must be shown on the plan adequate to carry the normal runoff and generate by, generated by a 50-year rainfall event. Not generating any sewers, you're just having culverts, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep, yep, so we have roadside swales, and we have culverts, and those are all designed. Yep.
So not applicable.
Well, it does say storm sewers either closed or open.
Yes, well, there's an open water, yeah. So all that is on there, on the multiple surveys. Kevin makes a motion that they're, he meets 8.1.4, I'll second that, do we have any discussion? All in favor? Approved. 8.1.5, public access roads included must be built by the applicant prior to the insurance of the occupancy permit. Road meets minimum specifications, that is part of the, your design plan is to bring that portion of the existing old Kennebec Pond Road up to town specs, to, old Kenny Run Road, old Kennebec Road to help Alfred out.
Yep.
And, yeah. So, do we have a motion that they will meet the road minimum standard specifications?
Yep.
We'll vote Kevin and Tim, we have any discussion? All in favor? All right. 8.1.6, all lots in accordance with Article 6.2 of the Liming Zoden Ordinance and Shoreland Zonement, Section 15. Do we have a motion?
Yep.
We have a second. Kevin seconds, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. You can sit down unless there's something that comes up. You know, if you want to pull the chair and bring that microphone down.
It is on the long board.
8.1.7. Lots in general purpose zone require 375 feet of road frontage and have access at grade not exceeding 10% to the road. And they are stating that it is not a, nope, this one, this is 8.1.7. They comply. Yeah, there's two 8.1.7s.
Yeah.
8.1.7.8, yeah. So was that a motion that they meet as? I'll second that, do we have any discussion?
No.
There are no discussion, all in favor? All opposed, unanimous. Again, 8.1.7. Lots in our zone require 300 feet of road frontage and have access to grades not exceeding 3% to road. They have stated that it is not applicable. So, Bill makes a motion that it is not applicable, I'll second that motion, do we have any discussion? All in favor? Not applicable. Now, we move on to section 15 of the shoreline zoning, which is that, why is that even in there?
What's section 15 zoning?
Because after we go 8.1.7, the next line, section 15 of the shoreline zoning ordinance, which is not applicable when not in shoreline zoning. That is not applicable. So that's my motion, it's not applicable. Do I have a second? You see where I'm at, Kevin?
No.
I suppose if we were in the shoreline zoning, we would have to revert to that.
Yeah, I agree.
So you're second in my motion that it's not applicable?
Yep.
Any discussion that it's not applicable? All in favor? Kevin's like, yeah, not applicable. 8.2 monuments. This is almost, looks like it's after the fact, after it's built. I know. Doesn't make sense. If it's before me, I read it. Monuments set at all corners and angle points, that will be done?
Yeah, I'll just state that they'll set the monuments per the requirements, I think it's at all, what is it?
Defining roads and boundaries of subdivision.
Yeah, those have to be granite monuments, and the other corners can just be like a rebar.
Yeah.
Yeah, lot corners can be rebar.
Yep.
All right.
So, section 8.2, 1 to 8.3, 8.2.3
All good.
Are all good, they all meet the requirement.
I agree.
I would love to just say all in favor.
It's all the same thing.
It's, it, 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 well, 8.3 is street signs and
Yeah, you get the same thing with that.
Yeah. Just keep your hands up, guys. All monuments set at angles and corners and angles. All in favor? All opposed? Done. So if anyone asks, I get it. Monuments defining roads and boundaries of subdivision must be five by five by four.
They're going to be.
Long and set at least six inches above the ground. Opposed? Carry. Monuments at lot corners and angles may be number five rebar cap with four inch long cap and tap to identify surveyor. Approved. You never know.
Number five.
Now we move on to 8.3, street signs, the names, street names must be approved by the 911 officer.
Yes, they were.
Perfect, second that.
Second, all in favor? Done. Street signs and traffic signs must be furnished by the subdivision and approved by the road commissioner. They should all be something true. Move that once it's done, they will meet the criteria. Second? All in favor?
Yep.
Opposed? Good. Roads, classification equals major or minor, this is going to be major subdivision. And the road specifications are there. So, motion? Second? Favor? Favor? This does not make sense. Road specification, eight four three, clearing.
I, I know we, it has a list to go through, but if we approve the plan, it's on the plan. I don't see why we need to go item by item.
I know, this is.
Yeah.
So road specifications, I make a motion that they meet the criteria of the subdivision plans.
I like it. Because the next stuff is all been listed as not applicable.
It's all listed, we've gone through it.
With the preliminary plan.
Yep.
So eight, eight dot four, dot one through, eight dot four, dot five, five. Eight dot four dot five, five meets, meets the criteria.
So you're going all the way down to sidewalks?
Correct.
And there is a number that have been deemed not applicable. So we're not going commercial, off-street loading space, we're not doing.
They comply with that whole section.
Is that a motion, Bill?
Yes.
I'll, I'll second that. It's on the plans.
Getting that the applicant has met the criteria for eight point four point, eight four one through until eight four five five.
Yep.
The last eight four five five is eight four five five. That's, that's trees of three and second, third magnitude, C ordinance may be planted at intervals of less than 40 feet. All in favor? All opposed? Like, let's get this done. Is there anyone that disagrees with this? Everyone's like, no, keep going, keep going?
Yeah.
So eight dot five dot one and eight dot five dot two are not applicable. That's a motion.
That's a motion? I'm looking to make sure that this is all kept in order. Where'd we go? I got too much paper right here.
Eight dot five dot one, sidewalks.
This is good. Down there. So eight dot five dot one, two, eight five two, sidewalks, all means not applicable?
Not applicable.
Right.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Not applicable. What's your opinion on the water supply, Bill?
Well.
Well, since they're gonna have a well, I assume that's what it's gonna have, because there's no covered water.
Yeah, we're going all the way down to the well.
Which would cover, because the number of those are not applicable, since we're not, eight six eight is central water supply.
So eight dot, so eight dot six dot nine, so eight dot six dot one to eight dot six dot nine are not applicable.
Yeah, except the eights, eight dot six dot seven, the required wells.
Yes.
Which are happening.
Yep. So eight six seven meets the requirements.
Yep.
The others of that section are not applicable.
We have a motion, we have a second?
A second, yep.
Any discussion? Down to eight seven. Subsurface drainage. Everything here has been submitted by the applicant. Nothing has been requested to be not applicable. Do I have a motion?
Eight, eight seven three is not applicable, because there's no sewer system, central sewer system.
Oh, okay, that's right, I have that to that.
So eight seven.
We got two applicable, two not applicable.
Eight, seven three and eight seven four are not applicable. Eight seven one and eight seven two meet the, have, met the correct, required criteria. Here we go.
I'll second.
Agreed, yep.
All in favor? All opposed? Eight dot eight, subsurface, subsurface drainage. All the criteria have been submitted by the applicant, recorded, presented to us. So I'll make a motion that the applicant has presented all the criteria for eight point eight surface drainage. Do we have a second?
Yep.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? You getting this, Julie?
Yep.
Okay, good. Eight point nine, storm, storm drainage design standards. There's only one, two, three, four. The applicant has presented, submitted by the applicant. And this is to their storm water management underground drainage system demonstrates storm drainage, which is the swales and everything else, professional engineered, registered. Make a motion, the applicant meets criteria for eight point nine storm drainage design standards.
Agreed.
Any discussion? All in favor? Eight point ten, storm drainage construction standards. All have been presented, proved, laid out in the plan and packet and. So that's a meets criteria number, eight dash ten?
Yes.
I'll second that. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Hey, we're getting to homeowners association.
Right. That just gives you the false sense of security. There's a ways to go.
Okay. Homeowners Association shall comply with this section. And that is only one, only one question. So I'll make a motion, the applicant meets the homeowners association requirement at eight eleven point one dash six. Yes?
If I could address the chair, the applicant said that they would include a statement recognizing the, uh, public easement along the portion of Old Kennebuck Road that they are approving.
Yes.
Uh, and I asked that the applicant provide me, it said, one of the people that owns property there with a copy of the homeowners agreement.
Yeah, that will be all in pack with the, they, they have a lot of paperwork that once it's done will be recording registry of deeds, and I'm sure as in a butter, if they, because it's gonna be in with the CECs and ours, covenants, conservations, and restrictions of the homeowners association, and as part of that, it's gonna state that the section, the private section of the old Kennebuck, Kennebuck Road will be maintained, you know, in perpetuity, however, for public use and access. Because that was one of the things we, during the sidewalk, especially because they're gonna be maintaining part of the road to not block it off, to allow traffic and people to enjoy it. So that was one of the stipulations that was, they actually volunteered readily about that.
Can I get you to send me a copy of it while it's all done?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, sir. I'll also add to that, that the, there's a note on the subdivision plan as well that says that.
Yep.
They can't restrict access.
So did we vote on homeowners association shall comply with this section? I think I made a motion, Bill second. All in favor?
Yeah.
All opposed? Done, homeowners association. Now we move on to. Eight point nine point one. A lot of that is not applicable. Okay. I'll make a motion that the applicant has presented, submitted by the applicant, nine point one, nine point two, nine point three one, nine point three two, and has met the criteria. Do I have a second? Kevin seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? Nine point four, retention of proposed public sites and open spaces. None of that is applicable from nine point four one all the way to nine point seven. Do I have a motion that they, they agree with that? Bill seconds?
Yeah.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, not applicable. Nine point eight lots. That goes from nine point eight one to nine point eight seven. All of those requirements have been submitted by the applicant. I'll make a motion that they meet the criteria for nine point eight lots.
Yep.
Ten seconds, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Nine point nine utilities. There's only two standards. One has been presented, both of them have been presented by the applicant. Do I hear a motion?
Yep.
Ten motions, do we have a second? Kevin seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? Meet criteria for nine point nine. Nine point ten. Additional requirements. There's only one additional requirement that has been, look there, my, hang on a second. What's that?
You missed nine nine two.
Nine nine two. Nine nine one. Oh, it was stapled. No, nine two.
Underground power.
Underground power. Right. That's been presented.
Okay. It's on the plans, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that's still in the utilities, nine two one, nine nine one, nine nine two.
Yeah.
Keep me up, keep me up. So now we have additional requirements, which is only two items. They have been determined to be not applicable, which would be street trees and esponads and design minimum possible noise. I move that.
It's not applicable.
What's that?
It's not applicable.
That's right, they put it there, so we gotta approve that it's not applicable. I'll, I so move it. I'll second that. Any discussion that it is not.
No.
Applicable? Favor? Ten, cluster subject, cluster development standards, not applicable to the entire, because it's not a cluster subdivision. So that goes from ten point three one. All the way through.
Ten point three point three, ten.
And, yep.
Actually, no, that goes all the way to ten point eight point two, because that's all in relation to cluster subdivision. So do we have a motion that as this is not a cluster development standards, that it is not applicable? Do we have a second?
Yep.
All in favor? You gotta streamline this.
Yeah.
Don't run over taking this long, Mr.?
No, me either. Open space, ten, 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 ten. Ten buffering street, that's all. I think we've now skipped over two.
That's it. That's the end of it.
Nope, we still got subdivision regulations on page eight of eight, which is ten dash eight dash three.
It says all, other standards apply to the cluster housing development standards.
Yep.
With any kind of subdivision, shall apply. So this is not applicable, because it's still not a cluster subdivision.
Correct.
Right.
That's why I said, we're done.
Agreed.
So, haven't read all this. Reviewed and checked by the board members. And document presented. Do we have a motion that the applicant, because the plan is complete?
I make a motion that the plan is complete. I will second that. Do we have any discussion that this is final approved and ready to be notice of decision? Have you written that?
Yep.
My only question is, um, the separate Brock Farm Estates. Which is basically the existing subdivision amendment for the right of way. Do you want to handle that separately?
So you're looking at, okay, this is. Let me think.
That's really just in the.
Because this is the full packet, which would nullify this, but they got the same date of March twenty six, twenty five.
It's a separate subdivision.
Yeah, so the, the, the main, I'll call it the main house there that the applicant, Max lives in, is part of the Brock State subdivision, so, uh, we're amending that to get a right of way through his property to the rear, so it's just an amendment. I think, you know, it's all kind of the same application package. I would think you kind of approve it all as one, as, as long as you just reference both of them in your.
Because it'll be signing two plans.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's fine.
Because that was my question at the very beginning, because they had been that Brock subdivision when they had sold to their son.
Yep.
Friday. Good catch. But it was, that was more than five years ago that they did that. But subdivision would need a revision. We just, because all the documentation for the Harper has been carried over and transferred to the Brock in versifying to a certain extent. What's your motion, Kevin?
I make motion that we approve the, uh, the full final application for the Harper residential subdivision.
In the amended Brock Farm subdivision?
In the amended Brock Farm subdivision.
I'll second that motion. Do we have any discussions for accepting or finalizing the Harper residential subdivision and the modifications to the Brock Farm subdivision? Here are no discussion. All in favor of approving everything as presented, with the, with the conditions noted? All opposed?
No.
Done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Julie?
Joe, you're gonna get the HOA dot.
Yes. Yep, it should have been packed, but I'll send you separately too, just so you have that. And so you guys will write up the notice of decision, and that will be, do we need to be there when that's, I don't know, if it's approved through the planning board or the notice of decision? Do we have to be there for when that's approved, what you?
No, no.
Okay.
We'll get a copy, uh, we'll get the notice of decision approved and everything, uh, either Cecile or myself will sign it, and then it will get sent out to the D P.
Okay.
It goes to the registry, and they will mail it to.
Max. Yep.
It's gonna take a while.
Yeah, we're waiting for the, the D P permit too, so we won't even bring the subdivision plans for you to sign until we get that D P. All right, thank you.
But you know, it's, it's great when you can deal with someone that just works with you to get stuff done. I like it. I just did that stupid subdivision right there. Well, are we ready to close? No.
Motion nine.
Carlisle Brook Estates preliminary subdivision, do we want to take a minute or two break? Get two minutes? Two minutes? You got it.
What lights?
I think I'm going to need a whole beer when I get home.
Second that.
But do you realize there were this much talking?
These are for you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's just. We've got this in the shoreline, street side, more than that. How many lots is this? It gets small. Okay.
On the infamous power.
Okay, why? Oh, subdivision application drainage analysis. That's where all the legal stuff that. D E P, E P A, all alphabet soup.
I'm ready now.
Yep.
Soil surveys. Yes. Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Second that, forty cross?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. All righty, I'm ready to continue. Anyone else?
Think we're there.
Our break. Welcome Carlisle Brook Estate map four lot twenty two preliminary subdivision application.
All right, for the record, I'm Eric Sari from Altus Engineering. I'm here, here on behalf of the applicant. Um, I've got Troy Williams here with me and Jeremy France referencing the L L C. I also have Isaiah Plant from Kimball Survey and Design, obviously the surveyor. Um, we're looking at about forty six acres at the corner of Walker and Carlisle Brook Roads. And we were before you some time ago, a few months ago for sketch plan. I think it was back in the fall.
It was, yeah, just a kind of a preliminary, what do you guys think?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Uh, so the property itself hasn't changed. Um, everything slopes down into Carlisle Brook, which is in the back there, down on the bottom. Uh, you can see the dark spots here, these are all the test pits throughout the site. We've got fairly good soils throughout for septics. There are some chunks of wetland here, as well as two little stream channels that do have shoreline setbacks. There's a little bit of floodplain way down in the back. Topography obviously trends down towards the brook in the back. Do you want to go to the plan? This is almost the same layout that we had before. The big change is that at the board's request, we had an easement here that has now been changed to a proper right of way. Uh, so we've got two lots on this side here, accessed from existing frontage. These four here accessed off the new private right of way. These two are technically back lots. Um, and everything is between five and eleven acres in size. They're pretty good sized lots. Um, so it's actually kind of nice. Um, the wetlands here sort of enforce the building envelope, puts everybody up front on the hill anyway, so it sort of precludes them from going down into the back. Let's go to the next slide. Slide, it's, it's a piece of paper. All right, this, this one's going to be quick, Isaiah, you might as well stay there. This is just site distance. We've got site distance going in each direction. We've got adequate site distance, both vertically and horizontally. We've got, what's next? This is the road profile, also very simple. We're coming up from Walker Road here at one and a quarter percent all the way, very, very simple. There's no anything to this, it's, it's very straightforward. Uh, next one? Uh, I'll get to that. Yeah, this has a turnaround in the back. This is, uh, stormwater management. Um, we were going to put a little super elevation on this curve and we realized, well, what the heck? Why don't we just pitch the whole thing over to one side the whole way? So the whole road pitches to the, to a swale on the bottom, which drains towards the front, which is kind of misleading because you'd think it would drain towards the brook in the back, but it doesn't. Um, so we have the swale on this side, also a swale on that side, but all the drainage ends up here in the stormwater pond and that goes across the way there to the budding property. It's a decrease in peak rates, passes the fifty year storm. So it does what it's supposed to do.
Will not be being directed to a, in a butter.
It, it goes to an abutting property that's wooded, there's nothing there. And I believe, judging from the topography, this does turn into a stream at some point. You can see this depression right in here and it looks like there's probably a culvert coming across in here. Uh, there's no roads, driveways, no houses or anything downstream of that. So there's no impacts and it is a decrease in peak rates runoff, so it does meet the rules.
Nothing you want to do is.
Oh, I don't want to flood the neighborhood. Oh, no, no, no. Not, not my job, I don't want to do that. Uh, but let's go next, next one. This is erosion control, very simple. We've got a stabilized construction exit here. We've got erosion control, uh, at those culverts. We've got some rip rap and then the green going along there is erosion control blanket in the swale, so they stay nice and stabilized. Don't really need them in this case, it's one and a quarter percent, but I always do them anyway, just in case. One more and then, then, then we're done. This is utilities, uh, very simple, wells and septics, as you guys would assume, passing test pits everywhere. You can see the circles here for well radii. We do have overhead power and I wanted to gauge the board's appetite for that, if that could be a potential waiver. Um, right now we're proposing overhead just because it is pretty rural out there and it is a private street.
One thing that we are, I, in my eleven years have not wavered, when you get above a three unit subdivision, everything is underground.
Got it.
I have not seen a waiver for that yet.
Okay.
Does that be for like, it, it more than three units were using that power?
No, any subdivision over three units.
Okay.
Uh, that way there, again, we are very rural, so one of the reasons for the underground is trees come down during storms. And if it's underground, the tree's going to hit the ground, that's it. Above ground, that's when you lose power and people start complaining and, I've been without power for two hours. Okay, you listen to me. But yes, I. You can ask for a waiver, that's, that's your right choice.
Okay.
Uh, we, this is eleven years, I have not seen a waiver on a major subdivision.
Okay. All right, well, we will, we will discuss that further down the road here. Uh, well, that's the, the presentation in essence, so we're looking for acceptance of the application. I'm sure you guys want to do a public hearing, maybe a sit walk?
We've got to look at the application, see if it's, this is preliminary.
Yes.
So we would need to look and see. Julie, I see nothing's been submitted. I know I got to stop here, but this is not submitted. Is this an error in my part that I didn't, I'm not seeing?
It's been a busy week.
I agree.
I, I believe, I believe everything was done, so.
I can tell you. The upper subdivision dropped off their, their big box of stuff. Shortly before. These gentlemen. Their big box of stuff. And we had dock permits submitted like madmen.
I'm not.
I, the only thing I did was separated out and put elastics on them.
And we appreciate that.
And that's as I.
I'll just quickly read through and we'll.
I'll, I'll give you the verbal if it's there or not.
Questions will be asked and if it's not here, then it'll be conditional.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Six point one, nine copies of all maps and or drawings or prints reduced to a paper, reduced on paper, drawn to a scale, one e, one equals not more than one hundred feet. And I'm just looking at the scale, I got a big one here.
Yeah, you, you got it.
And that has been received. There's the board.
Been a long day.
I feel like one of those Baptist ministers. No disrespect, no, it's just, wah. I'll make a motion that the applicant meets criteria or presents the information for six point one. Do I have a second? Second, any, uh, any discussion? All in favor? Approved. Received by the planning board. Six point two, location map, scale not more than one, uh, four hundred to one.
We've got that, there's one on the cover sheet, which is big, one of two thousand.
Say, yep, this one's two thousand.
Yep.
I move the applicant meets criteria or has presented the information for six point two to the board.
Yep.
Seconded by Tim, any discussion? All in favor? Received. Six point two, one, all existing subdivision and or approximate track lines of the acreage of with adjacent parcels owners names.
Got that on the existing conditions plan, it goes as far as we can, we can, we can on the sheets.
C one as well.
Yeah, it's all, yeah, it's she one oh one and C one's got some as well.
So was that a motion that you presented it to the board? I'll second that. Any discussion? Waiver? Received by the board. Six point two, two, location of all existing and proposed streets, street names, easements, building lines.
That is on sheet C one, got the street, there is an easement that's on there for drainage and utilities, it's all there.
Do I have a motion that the board has received, two point two, two?
Yep.
You got a motion? Second by Kevin, all in favor? Opposed? Six two, three, boundaries of zoning schools, districts, perks, parks and public spaces.
That would be N A, there's nothing close.
Yeah. I make motion that six two, three is not applicable. Tim seconds, any discussion? All in favor? Not applicable. Six two, four, outline of proposed subdivisions with street system.
There's a street.
Existing Carlisle Brook Road. So we've got a right of way and access by an existing road. So. I make motion that six two, four has been submitted to the board. Have a second?
Just that it's been submitted.
That it's been submitted, not approved, but.
Yep.
So that's your second?
Yep. Yep.
A motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor? Has been submitted. Six three, name of subdivision, deed reference and engineers and surveyors.
The deed reference, you got it on the first page and, uh, C one, name of the subdivision is on all sheets, except for the existing conditions plan. And we've got, uh, engineer stamp and surveyor stamp throughout.
Do I have a motion that they meet?
Yep.
Six three, motion, I'll second that, any discussion? All in favor? Received. Six point four, graphic scale one to a hundred, date and north point.
Yep.
I make motion that meets, we have been presented by six point four. Second. Tim seconds, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Six point five, boundaries of track. It's all there. Do we have a motion?
Yep.
I see Kevin's head nodding, I hear Tim responding, yes. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? We have received it. Ownership, location of abutting properties. And on C two, I am seeing abutting properties with the owners and lots and book and page. I make motion that we have been received, six, six.
Yep.
We have, Tim seconds, any discussion? All in favor? Received. Six seven, name, location and width of all streets. That is, we got the name, we got the location.
Yep, the width is going to be on C three. Buried in there somewhere. Yeah, I got a twenty, yep.
Area is, and Kennamook Lane is going to be, is going to be private with Hammerhead. There's two back lots and the existing street is already there, Carlisle Brook Road. I make a motion that six, seven has been received.
That's Kenny Brook.
Kenny Brook, yeah.
Kenny Brook.
Kenny Brook.
Kenny Brook.
We figured it was a brook in the back, Kenan, Kenan bunk, it was kind of cool, so we, we put them together.
It looks like a gulf.
Oh, yeah.
I don't see that. Keep going. There was a motion and a second, any discussion that?
Who seconded?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, my head hasn't been snapping this way back and forth, you know, trying to, not taking attention. So the motion, a second, any discussion? Clarification on the name? All in favor? Opposed? Received. Acceptable cross section layout of proposed rows.
Yep, cross.
I saw that.
It's in the back. D four, last page.
So I'll entertain a motion that the applicant has presented us with six point seven point one. I entertained, I didn't make. See, I changed things up to see if people paid attention. I'll second that, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? We have received it. Profile of proposed streets.
C three.
Do we have a motion? I'm seeing Kevin nodding, do we have a second? I'll nod myself. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Received. Six eight. Drainage plan existing and proposed in preliminary design of any bridges or culverts required.
C four's got everything you need. No bridges though.
No bridges. How do you tell the trouble? Okay, entertain a motion that we have received, six point eight. We got a motion. Kevin seconds, any discussion? All in favor? Done. Six nine, location of all existing utilities.
That would be on one of one, the second sheet of the plan set. Not allowed out there, we've got overhead power and that's it.
Yep. I'll make motion that we have received the location of all existing utilities as per six point nine.
Yep.
Tim second, any discussion? Any call in favor? Received. Six point ten, test pits for sub surface waste disposal, wastewater disposal system where each proposed lot shall be excavated in the presence of a plumbing inspector. And you presented us with test.
Yeah, test pits are all over the place. Yeah, I believe the logs are in the application package as well.
Yep. I think that's part of the one I have here.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, we have received six point ten.
So is there a septic design?
No, no, that's, that's, each, each lot owner is going to be responsible for their own well and septic, so if they choose, they can move things around if they want, as long as they meet state regs. So they, they may do additional test pits if they want to.
Um, there's a report in the package, um, for Rebecca to review.
Yeah, there's, there's test pits, testament logs in there, I believe. Yeah.
Any more discussion?
Who seconded?
I motion, I think you seconded it. And Tim asked a question. Any discussion?
I'm not keeping up, it's too late.
I know.
I got started thirteen hours ago.
All in favor?
That means you get tomorrow off.
All opposed. Yeah, because I, I woke up four thirty this morning. Uh, number six point one, one, topography at two foot interval base.
Yep, that's, that plan you're looking at.
I'm just looking for the scale. Your motion that six point. Motion that 6.11 has been presented?
Yep.
Tim motions? Kevin seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? Presented. 6.12, lot lines and approximate dimensions. Well, he said not approximate, I think you're pretty accurate on the survey.
Well, yep.
I move that 6.12 has been presented to the board, received by the board.
Second.
Tim seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I see you don't do rods and chains and purlons and.
Not anymore, yeah.
About farmer Jim's.
Well, a lot of them are still like that.
I read all the time.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, 613, proposed uses of property. Residential subdivision.
Residential subdivision, yeah.
Kind of what it's all about, so I move that we have been received 6.13. Now, a second.
Yep.
Tim seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? 614, proposed public areas to be dedicated.
That is NA.
Not applicable, private, not cluster subdivision. Not land use, uh. That thing when they put aside land. Open space, public open space. Move that it is not applicable. Have a second.
Yep.
Tim seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? Not applicable, not applicable. 615, provisions of the zoning ordinance applicable to the area.
There is a zoning table on C1. And I think you've got one on your existing distance plan as well, so you've got it in two places. Hope they match.
So it is residential subdivision is approved for the area. So. It is an approved use, I'll make a motion that we have received the zoning ordinance applicable to the area. I have a second.
Yep.
Tim seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Received. 616, soils report.
Soils, it's in there, exactly.
Wonderful.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we got it all.
I move that we have been presented with, we have received 616, soils report. Do I have a second? Kevin seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? Received. 617, center line of proposed streets, stake and mark, which will be.
That'll be, if you guys wanna do a sidewalk, we can do that for you. So, yeah.
Why they want the center line, I don't know. I'd rather see what the boundaries are involved. And of course, the road, I saw a road here somewhere. That looks good. Anyway. Does the board agree that with 617 that we have received the center line for proposed streets, stake, and mark? Which will be, I believe, covered under 64. Uh, C4, not 64.
C3.
C3.
C3. Well, actually, it's on there, it's on both of them.
Yeah.
It's overkill. Wanna make sure you got it all.
Yeah. More information's better. Do we have motion? Kevin motions? Do we have a second? I'll second. Do we have any discussion? No discussion, all in favor? Received. 618, soil erosion and sediment control plan containing endorsements from the York County Soil and Water Conservation District and the Main Soil and Water Conservation Commission.
C5 is our erosion control plan. Again, very, very simple.
Do we have a motion that we have received 618? Do we have a motion? I'll make the motion. Do we have a second? You can't second, Julie.
I wasn't seconding.
She was moving you along.
Yeah, I was. Does it have the endorsement of the York County Soil and Water Conservation?
I do not.
That would come up under, under discussion, then the motion would be subject to.
Yeah.
I'm just asking. If you ask my.
Okay, yeah, if it's subject to, I'll say.
Yeah, yeah, we, we don't have the endorsement, but it's, it's so run-of-the-mill.
Yeah. But we get it.
Yeah.
So. We have motion and a second. That 618 has been presented. Do we have discussion? Discussion has been stated that currently we do not, that they would be a subject to matter that would be needed to proceed further. That sound agreeable? Sound agreeable to you guys?
Works for us.
Okay, so subject to, all in favor of the subject to? Okay. Preliminary application. We've been completed with the exception of 618 with, which is the approval of the Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Plan containing endorsements from the York County Soil and Water Conservation District and the Main Soil and Water Conservation Commission.
Yes.
I still gotta read it. So do we declare the preliminary plan complete, subject to? Is that a motion?
Yep.
Kim second? Kevin second? All in favor? All opposed? Do we want to schedule a sidewalk?
Come on, one.
I don't know.
We might need snows, might need snowskeers for 4:01.
It is posted.
You never know.
And we gotta give public notification.
Oh, and I was told you guys can't rush these things. Time is needed to get things posted.
Yep. This is the official notification broadcast across the universe. Is that work?
Works for us.
Uh, sidewalk.
You know, what day?
I'm looking at Julie's calendar.
We're working on that.
I'm looking at my calendar. What's today? Today's the 2nd.
Yeah.
It can't be this Saturday.
No, we need 2 weeks, 14 days. Where's that tape, that table saying, when the?
My chart?
Yes, your wonderful Don Herman chart, which we love. Look at that. You know, we need a little booklet of all the miscellaneous paperwork that we have.
I know.
You don't need another book.
Oh, before, what Julie has done is put all this.
Put it all in one spot? Hey, alright.
It is, oh, I need subdivision, subdivision, scroll and.
I found my chart. Alright, sidewalks. After your application is complete, we have to do a sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
Um, all it says is we have to give advance notice. Uh, it's recommended 1 week, but we have to give extra time. Because we only have 1 person that can post anything. So. I believe. We can do it on the 12th, as long as.
12th's not a good day for me.
It's Passover.
Easter is the 20th.
Ooh.
So not the 19th. Right?
Does it have to be a Saturday?
We have done Sundays.
That's tough, cuz everybody's got schedules. I don't mind a Sunday as long as I know in advance.
Yeah, and that's. Should only take us half an hour.
Not, not the 20th.
Yeah, exactly. The 13th?
Could it be under the week?
We need sunlight, so we would have to be probably like 5:30 or something like that, like a regular meeting.
That would work too, yeah.
It's just fitting in all the other, like Wednesdays basically are out for me. Mondays are tight.
Well, if somebody can't make it, the stakes will be there, I suppose.
But we need to have a minimum of, a quorum of at least 3.
Yeah.
Uh, other than that, you know. We hate that if we set a sidewalk and then like, uh, tonight Cecile couldn't be here cuz she was sick. Or people are on vacation, or, um. During the winter when it's snowing or whatever, and Bill's plowing, taking care of his, his business. So we tried the handwork with the client.
On Friday, the 11th? Available?
That's.
Or Tuesday, the 15th?
That's tax day, that's a day.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
I mean, I can do the 12th, which is Passover, but I, I mean, which is next Saturday. What was that?
I thought the 19th was Passover.
Passover is the 12th. Yeah.
What was the last weekend? It was Friday, now, or whatever, I can't remember. So many holidays. Anyone wanna do? Saturday, April 12th at 9 o'clock?
I can do that. Yeah, it works.
Build that, that way there, when rushing out of bed and can't finish our breakfast, but it gets us back and time to go out for brunch? Kevin, can you do that? Can you guys do that?
Yep.
9 o'clock on the 12th?
9 o'clock on the 12th. Sidewalk. And you never know. A lot of times, it is just planning board with a representative, and I have seen, was it the one off from Rock Road? We had like 30 people show up.
Yeah, it all depends on what it is.
Yeah, or, oh, I remember the hunting and fishing through there, or, you know, that was a farmer's field. Some people have a very passionate, others like, have that. So. Be prepared either way for the board and representatives, or. People with dogs and everything walking and asking, you know, like, what are you planning on doing with those beach trees that have been there forever? It happens.
Yeah.
So, alright.
We want to set the public hearings while we're here because advance notice and it takes room to get things going. Um, since we already have the 2 small ones happening on the 7th, we could do May 21st. That is the first open date.
Let's get it on the books. What else do we have on the 7th?
On the 7th, we've got.
Me.
Public hearing from our cat.
Uh, do you have a meeting on the 16th?
For our public hearings, we have to send notices out to the lawyers, and we have to send them out 20 days in advance. Because, because the mail is so questionable some days.
Yeah. Yeah, and the last thing is, well, I was in Florida and I didn't get back up here, and my mail wasn't forwarded. If we could, I planned it for 2 weeks, we can. So we gotta give, allow everyone the opportunity to come and say their piece and everything like that.
We were doing it, um.
I think it was 14 days.
14 days, and it got, it, people weren't getting their notices in advance. They were getting them a few days late, and they were complaining, so we had to go 20 days.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then they've got the list.
Everyone within 500 feet, I believe it is.
Everyone within 500.
Which, which isn't much.
No, which is great, I mean, you're not in. Imagine if you were downtown Chicago.
Oh, no, no.
Subdivisions of 30,000 people.
No kidding.
So what day did we sign up?
Uh, May 21st.
Wednesday, May 25.
When our meeting starts.
Okay, so the sidewalk is gonna be the 12th at 9 o'clock, and the public hearing is gonna be May 21st at 5:30.
Love it.
Then.
We gotta.
The, the next meeting on the 16th, if you wanna come and discuss the sidewalk. You can come in and chat with them.
Do you guys think that's gonna be necessary or no?
Some, if there's.
If there's big, big issues.
If they, if the public shows up at the sidewalk. They're gonna come in, whether it's on the agenda or not, and go, well, what about Carlyle? Now. We're not supposed to allow public comment outside of predetermined. Sometimes it can't be helped, but we're trying to. And it makes logical sense.
Yeah. We'll, we'll play that by ear, and we'll discuss how to the sidewalk and see how we feel.
Cuz we also. And I'll give you time to go through the rest of the second review or requirements and make sure all those things are checked and I's dotted, T's crossed.
Yeah, yeah.
Because as you start from the one previous.
It's a lot of stuff, yeah.
I'll put you on the agenda, and then.
For the 16th?
For the 16th, just, I'll just put a note that says, recite my notes.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
And then you all.
We'll work it out, okay.
Can discuss that at the sidewalk.
Okay.
And it's better to see a full prepared, prepared plan. Than someone coming in and fighting us everything to, and then they're saying, why is it taking us 6, 8 months? Well, because you didn't present this. You know, we asked about that and you didn't provide it. Or the public comments. The next meeting is the 16th.
April 16th.
I was gonna say June 16th.
That's too far.
No, no, we're not.
That would be nice if that was the next meeting.
April 16th, you said you have 2 public comments?
No, um, May 7th.
May 7th?
Yes, our next meeting, April 16th, is just a normal meeting for us, thank goodness.
Oh, you're saying we can go back for final? What do you mean, what do you mean for final?
This.
Yeah, the whole list. That we just heard. It's pretty much all there, right?
Right.
We'll just go through it and make sure it's where it needs to be, but we need a preliminary approval first. No, we gotta go to the public hearing first.
Cuz of all those pages, we've got checkboxes that have been, so it should be received, and then we review it, make sure it's been approved. Is it up to the standards, you know?
So could you do preliminary on the 21st after the public?
We just did preliminary.
Could you do that on the?
It's not.
Yeah, that's, that's just accepting the application.
Right.
Yeah.
And then again, all those things, the DEP approvals, uh, naming lot numbers. We don't have to deal with scroll and zoning, but subsurface drainage, everything.
Has it been submitted to the DEP?
Uh, it's only a PBR for this one. So it's 2-week notice. The area of disturbance and the impermeable doesn't meet the threshold for full stormwater permit. So. That's quick.
Yeah. Surprisingly quick.
Yeah, the, the roads, it's, it's only about 650 feet of road, so it's not a lot of road.
Yeah.
Which is good for you guys as developers.
Absolutely.
So for the sidewalk, we'll meet at the end of Carlyle Brook Road. I don't think there's any good parking, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be wherever we find the parking. I think it's really gonna drive it. I mean, it almost makes sense to meet near the intersection, but who knows wherever the space is. I think just look, look for the cars.
I was gonna say, probably be up Carlyle Brook, then walk up, find the flagging.
Yeah.
Or.
Yeah.
We have proposed tree and. See where the land takes us.
Yeah.
Uh, we have done full, full subdivision sidewalks and noticed that in one, there was a large area of wetland that was access of ingress. The disturbance of it was highly suspect. So it was like, how are they gonna get one portion to another while we, ah. Wetland is.
Yeah, it's not an issue here, I don't think.
That's right.
So, I'm just, some clarity, so today you are approving the application?
No, they accepted the application.
And that you have presented yourself to us with the minimum information required to get the process started.
Okay. And we can't get a preliminary approval until after public hearing?
Right, the public's gotta come in, have the ability. To go to the sidewalk. Walk it, just like the rest of us. Jot notes, ask questions, take all that information down. Come to the public hearing, express everything. Uh, there may be something that one of the members of the public. Has a question about that someone didn't think about. Has a concern. Uh, us walking the site. We may see, again. Wait a minute, something doesn't look right.
No worries, I, I, I understand. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, I. Yeah, I, we would love it if it was a two-page application that we looked and went, yep, they cut it, this looks good.
Doesn't have no...
Sadly, yeah, rubber stamp, rubber stamp. Because last thing is, something happens, they file a complaint, goes to the zoning board of appeals, zoning board of appeals doesn't like it, goes to court, district superior, and now you are two, three years into things with tens of thousands of dollars because a question wasn't asked and answered. You know, it's beneficial to all parties involved to, and it can be frustrating for us to go, no, this has to be a one to forty survey, you know, or minimum one to forty survey.
Other than that, thanks.
We're here to educate, because it educates us as well. We all said. We will see you on April twelfth, nine o'clock.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you for much coming on.
Thanks for your attention.
My gosh.
I was going to say, and you saw everything I got to go through. I'm talking, talking, talking.
There has to be a better way.
There has to be.
There has to be.
But if, God forbid, that one question isn't asked, it's made to apply it, someone can always have the right to file a complaint or stop the process or whatever. So that's why with certain things, unnecessary, we have to really state that each and every one of them is unnecessary, or each and every one of is present and proved. Thank you, guys. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
All right.
Agenda, where do we have?
Minutes.
Minutes.
There were no minutes.
Good.
Sorry.
Because I didn't read them.
I didn't, I didn't see any, yeah.
I didn't see it.
So...
So we need to start the agenda for the next meeting.
Well, so we'll postpone the reading of the minutes till the next meeting.
Perfect. You have my vote.
Think that was an executive one, it's done.
So for the next meeting, your homework is, I sent you out the notice of decision on the dock, ramp thing for Bunguna, did you get it?
I thought I sent it back with any niche picks, picks and nits. Maybe I didn't have any. No, I didn't get that one because I would have come...
Thought I sent it out.
One more.
I can't be talking.
Because, yeah, because it was, I said received, and then you were going to do the formal, and then Cecile or I were going to come down and sign it, I hadn't heard anything.
Well, it's not going to be registered, it's just to go in the file. Did I even stand up? So we'll put that on the agenda for next time, Bunguna.
Oh, let's stack up the next agenda.
No.
I'm not going to be here, so.
All I've got is the one from Cecile, and then the one we had for the agenda and the documents for today, that's all I got. Oh, there, wait, whoa, down here on the twenty fourth, there's a Bunguna dock, no.
There you go.
Tape.
All right. All right. Yep, that's on three twenty four. Microsoft has had a big issue with mail.
Yeah, I know.
Some days I get a hundred and the next day I get nothing.
I sent out the subdivision, both packets, individual, yours was denied and yours was denied.
Really?
Undeliverable.
Oh, my gosh.
It's like crap, that, that's the end of the page, just a doubt.
It's just bigger power than me to control that.
I know.
Anything else to the agenda for?
What do we get next? I don't know.
Ah...
So you'll put something together and email us.
Somebody will get it and email you. Well, we'll have to put together a notice of decision for Jenna, somebody will have to.
Well, there's a notice of decision for Jenna Salvo, so that's been cleared. Patrick Gagin Wilderness, we've done the sidewalk, we got to have a public hearing?
Yeah, we said that.
Yeah, we said it.
On Wednesday in May.
Okay, yeah, there he is, May seventh. Daniel Marquardt.
Yep, we got to make sure we got all...
Public hearing is on May seventh as well.
But we got to make sure we got all the information, there's some stuff missing on that one.
Justin and Paige Tharp, um, Walker Road, I think we need, they need to submit an application.
Yeah.
A complete application because it's just...
The one thing that I, I didn't comprehend is, you've got that three hundred foot circle, and my understanding was that had to fit on their property. It doesn't fit.
That's why full survey with the boundaries and wetland delineation.
You know, I, I understand him saying that he's got the setbacks, but you still have other requirements that follow more than the setback.
Exactly. Just because it looks good, you got to prove it's good. That's...
Yeah, and it looks as though the original lots in the original subdivision were five-acre lots.
Right, that's general purpose.
Yeah, but it's going to lessen the acreage of that one lot, right?
The split will not bring that, that down because it's swap equal amount of lot.
Yeah, it's on a double, double.
It was one and a quarter acres each, so they're going to switch one and a quarter
Yeah, but he needed some of that, so that density would be included in the easement.
Yes, yeah, the easement, it's not going to take away from the lot size.
Won't take away from the lot.
No, and right away doesn't take, subtract from the lot size.
Okay.
So we'll see if we can get them... Get them here for next time.
They got to present a packet for us. You know, fill out the application, present the fee, make sure that they get the surveys, get the wetland. We won't be concerned with test pits because when, it's not a subdivision, it's a landslide. So we have nothing to do with that.
It's, it's an amended subdivision with a new lot added.
I don't think it's being added to the subdivision. The lot's not being added to it, it's a separate lots from the subdivision.
It's walking on the... And it only accessed via portion of the subdivision with an existing structure and septic system, well, you know.
It's still an amended subdivision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is, we also would like to see the association documents, just so that there is no statement saying it cannot be subdivided. All right, so...
So that's what I got for next time. If I find anything else, I'll let you know.
Yep.
Only the general grace of decisions, the only thing we've got.
Performance guarantee? Just to get that complete?
I'm making a note.
Well, that's going to be a figure that's going to come off of the total cost of the project.
Usually it's a percentage of the overall cost, was it, was it two percent or five? I don't remember, I saw it.
Who comes up with the schedule values?
It was a two percent of the cost.
Yeah, but don't, they ask that, you got to leave this infrastructure cost, that has to be somewhere in there.
Yes.
All right.
So the owner presents us with the schedule values?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So you're going to be in charge next week, or next month, or, well, the next meeting.
The next quiet meeting.
Yeah, he gets to quiet one. I got tonight.
Yep.
All right.
I already, I already have the agenda for the meeting.
Yep.
Adjourned.
Do we have any old business coming before the board?
No, everybody came forward for this meeting.
Which is nice, which is good. Hearing then, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yep.
We have a motion to have a session.
Yeah.
We have a discussion.
Give me five minutes.
No.
We're headed out.
All opposed, closed, eight forty-nine.
We hit past quarter hour mark.
Not that I would drag this out.
If I leave the Carlisle Brook here, can I get it back next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to leave it.